Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll? Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Mayor Protem Talamontes. Councilmember Valenzuela. Vice Mayor Maples. Councilmember Gata. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Vang. And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Councilmember Kaplan, would you please lead us in the land of acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
Please stand at your equal. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people's land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement, appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' histories, contribution, and lives. Thank you. Remain standing. Pledge. 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 Pledge.
Councilmember Kaplan, and good afternoon. This is the second in a series of workshops that the city council is having with the city team and the public as sort of a introduction and a preview of the upcoming city budget. Given the fact that we know we face deficit and that we have some, we're going to have some difficult decisions to make as a community and as a council, this is a very wise use of our time to get into sort of the detail that's hard to get into maybe in a regular budget hearing about what the departments are doing, what some of the challenges are, what some of the opportunities are for saving money. Certainly, we're open to all those ideas, especially if they don't result in service cuts or cuts to our city workforce. And so today, we have three departments: the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, Convention and Cultural Services, and Community Development. Mr. City Manager, you want to make some?
Yeah, just briefly. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the mayor has mentioned, this is the second in a series of three meetings that we're having that's going to showcase all the services that our departments provide as the context to leading into the budget discussions. As we've mentioned in the last workshop, we're looking at ways to, I mean, it's oversimplified, but looking at ways where we can increase revenue, reduce expenses, and adjust service levels to meet the target that I've asked all of our departments to meet preliminarily in terms of closing the budget gap for FY 24-25. And again, in, I think it's towards the end of February, we'll know what that number is, then we'll be coming back to the council, the Budget and Audit Committee, and then the council about the opportunities we have to close that gap. But this is really more informational for the public and for the council in terms of what we're doing now. Mayor mentioned the three departments that are coming up. I'm going to have Assistant City Manager Michael Jasso come in and introduce the departments one by one. Mike?
Thank you. Make sure the first slide is up. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Michael Jasso, and I'm the Assistant City Manager for the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, the Department of Convention and Cultural Services, and the Department of Community Development. I'm also the Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. I'm grateful to be here today and be joined by the leadership of these three units of our government to present the work that is done daily to advance the betterment of our city. Joining me in presenting today are Denise Malvetti, Deputy Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, Megan Van Voorhees, Director of the Department of Convention and Cultural Services (CCS), and Tom Pace, Director of the Department of Community Development (CCD). Denise has worked in local government for over 20 years, most of that time spent in economic development and redevelopment. She joined the City of Sacramento in 2004 as the Economic Development Project Manager and subsequently advanced in the city, ultimately being promoted to her current role of Deputy Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, also known as OIED, in 2022. Over her career at the city, Denise has led a number of economic development programs, projects, and initiatives, including Scale Up Sacramento, the city's first inclusive economic development strategy, our brownfield loans, loan programs, and implementation of the federal, of federal funding from the Coronavirus Aid and Economic Security Act, also known as CARES, and the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. As a Sacramento native, Denise has always demonstrated her commitment to be part of the continued revitalization of her hometown, and I, for my part, cannot fully express my appreciation for her hard work and leadership. Following Denise will be the Department of Convention and Cultural Services headed by Megan Van Voorhees. Megan joined city management in 2020, bringing over two decades of public policy and advocacy in the arts and culture. Most immediately, prior to being named as Sacramento's Creative Economy Manager, Megan was President and CEO of Arts Cleveland. Through her 17-year tenure at Arts Cleveland, Megan established a strong record of public policy and advocacy, securing wins such as a dedicated revenue stream for the arts and culture and revisions to local tax policy that was negatively impacting independent live music venues. After joining the city team in 2020 as our Creative Economy Manager, in 2022, we were fortunate to be able to name Megan as the Director of Convention and Cultural Services. Megan has and continues to demonstrate an unparalleled commitment to the city's cultural life as a vibrant, creative, and equitable place for residents, visitors, and businesses. Finally, closing our presentation will be Tom Pace, Director of Community Development. Tom has 20 years of experience in community development, current planning, long-range planning, housing policy, and community engagement. Previously, Tom was Planning Director for the City of Sacramento and Deputy Community Development Director for the City of Stockton, where he headed the city's planning and engineering functions. Tom's experience includes works in brownfield reuse, rail yard redevelopment, transit-oriented redevelopment, short-term home rental policies, flood risk management, infrastructure financing plans, and development impact fees. In Tom's role at the, at the City of Sacramento, he has directed the preparation of the 2030 general plan, the 2035 general plan update with an integrated climate action plan and a new planning and development code that replaced a 60-year-old zoning ordinance. As we present OIED, CCS, and CDD today, I would like to stress the following themes: The three units before you are among the most outward-facing entities to both residents and businesses within the Sacramento government. Collectively, they help shape the physical environment, our efforts to address the needs for greater equity, the provisioning of housing, the success of our businesses, and the vibrancy of our city as a truly unique and indispensable jurisdiction within the greater Sacramento region. Secondly, the vast majority of our work is done collaboratively with outside resident, business, institutional, governmental, and educational partners. Less visible is that invariably the work is done through a highly collaborative approach within our government. You will hear of many projects and programs that cross departmental boundaries. So with that, I would like to turn this over to Denise, who will present the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. I thank you, and will be available after for questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Malvetti. Welcome, Denise.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Denise Malvetti, Deputy Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. And I'm pleased to be here today to share the great work of our team and also some challenges we are facing. I want to start by thanking the OIED team for their hard work and commitment to the community. Most of them are actually right here in the chambers with us today. This small and mighty team has always worked incredibly hard, but the past four years, they have blown me away with how they have jumped in to support Sacramento's residents, community-based organizations, and businesses during such challenging times. In the first 18 months of the pandemic, this team deployed over $50 million of state and federal funding into the community. To give you an idea of scale, that is almost 10 times our office's annual operating budget. I also want to thank the office's management team, which includes Leslie Fritchie, Community Engagement Manager, Yaiyan Isle, City Housing Manager, Lynette Hall, Community Engagement Manager, and Tina Lee Voat, the Nighttime Economy Manager. So the City of Sacramento is committed to growing a strong, inclusive, and vibrant economy. Our office encourages job growth and investment in the City of Sacramento by retaining, attracting, growing, and scaling new and innovative businesses. The office is also focused on better connecting residents in underserved communities with critical resources like workforce training and housing, so all residents can participate in Sacramento's economic growth. Economic development is about our residents, it's about jobs, and it's about quality of To give you an idea of Sacramento's economic landscape and why economic development is critical to the health of our community, Sacramento is estimated to have 21,876 businesses. This includes your favorite coffee shop, art gallery, restaurant, as well as major retailers and corporations. These businesses make Sacramento unique. Sacramento is the hub of our 2.6 million-person region, and these businesses are some of the many reasons people choose to live in and visit Sacramento. I do want to note, however, that the same report last year showed 500 more businesses, which signifies a lot of closures. Many of our businesses are still feeling the repercussions of the pandemic or are struggling with inflation, perceptions of safety, and access to capital. Not only are our businesses critical to Sacramento's quality of life and opportunities for our residents' upward mobility, the health of our businesses is directly tied to the city's fiscal sustainability. The city's 2324 budget projected sales tax to be approximately $245 million, which is about 32% of general fund revenues. Not only are your favorite stores and restaurants an important part of what makes Sacramento so amazing, they are critical to the health of this city. Additionally, property taxes estimated this year to be $219 million and TOT at $34 million. All of these revenue streams are directly tied to the economic health of our community and this city. I'd like to highlight the sales tax number because the city experiences sales tax leakage. As our surrounding suburban communities grow their retail and dining options, our residents are leaving to shop in other communities, and fewer residents from surrounding areas choose to come to Sacramento to shop and dine. We must remain competitive. This afternoon, I will share the many ways that our office collectively with our internal city partners and community partners support our 21,000-plus businesses in hopes that they stay and grow in Sacramento, creating economic opportunities for our residents and generating sales tax, property tax, and TOT to sustain the city. The work in our office is informed by past council actions and regional initiatives, including the Innovation and Growth Policy and Job Growth and Employment Incentive Policy, both focused on stimulating the innovation ecosystem and diversifying Sacramento's economy by stimulating private sector job growth. Our work is also informed by Project Prosper, which the city launched in 2017 with community outreach centered on inclusive economic development, which served as a foundation for the following inclusive economic development work. In 2019, city council approved the Inclusive Economic Development Funding Strategy to foster economic and community development and job growth within the city that create opportunities for all Sacramento residents, while at the same time prioritizing strategic investments for people of color, low-income individuals, and under-invested communities. These guidelines played a key role in the design and implementation of many CARES and ARPA-funded programs. Most recently, in 2021, Scale Up Sacramento, an inclusive economic development agenda, highlighted opportunity industries and strategies for Sacramento to inclusively grow these industries. I also want to highlight regional initiatives, including work with the Brookings Institution and the Regional Prosperity Strategy. Both were led by a partnership of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Valley Vision, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and the Metro Chamber. It is important that our economic development efforts are done in coordination with our regional partners, since we are part of one regional economy. While working closely with our regional partners, we must also be strategic about remaining a competitive option within our region. Collectively, these past actions have informed the work of our office and how our office is organized in the following groups: community investment, economic development, workforce development, nighttime economy, housing, and community engagement. In addition to the FTEs you see on the slide, there are four of us in the administration unit that work across all depart, sorry, which work across all teams to implement the many projects and programs. The FTE count does not represent filled positions. We have about a 20% vacancy rate, as we have struggled in recent years to attract candidates. Although our 36 FTEs are organized in these teams, we work closely across the department to support Sacramento's people, places, and businesses, so I will discuss our work in those themes. I will start with people, our residents, the reason we are all here. We are here to serve Sacramento residents, and our residents are also the most important asset in today's knowledge-based economy. Sacramento's future success depends upon our dedication to better developing worker's skills to match what will be required in the emerging job market. In order to help those connections, the city established a community engagement team in our office in 2019 as a part of the Neighborhood Development Action Team, which you will hear Tom and I both talk about today, and I may refer to it just as ENDEP from this point forward, since it's a mouthful. It became evident as a part of our inclusive economic development work that the city needed to find new and better ways to reach our residents. Lynette Hall joined the city in December 2019, and thank goodness she did. Within months of Lynette joining the city, the pandemic hit, and it became more critical than ever for us to engage our residents in our businesses. The purpose of the community engagement team is to design effective outreach and engagement strategies. The team fosters inclusive civic engagement by striving to ensure that all residents are well-informed about city matters, resources, and opportunities, to create a platform that educates, engages, and empowers people, businesses, and places, especially areas and residents that have been disproportionately underserved. You will see on this slide some of the many ways that the community engagement team, along with our other city partners, have engaged the community. Some of those include extensive outreach regarding the CARES and ARPA program, CARES and ARPA-funded programs, development of a business customer relationship management system, a CRM system, in partnership with IT, a volunteer and internship program that supports all city departments, partnering with the Community Development Department on the African-American experience and the upcoming LGT, LGBTQ experience, and monthly communication toolkits for our community organizations. I'd like to take a moment, though, to highlight a few of their programs in more detail. First is the award-winning Community Ambassador Program, which is in partnership with community development as part of the ENDEP work. The Community Ambassador Program pays residents to establish and maintain relationships with culturally diverse and historically underrepresented populations. The program aims to bridge the gap between the city and the community, ensuring access to information and resources. The current cohort consists of 18 ambassadors, providing language access in over 11 languages. This program recently received the Award of Excellence and Best Practices from both the state and local chapter of the American Planning Association. Next is the City Management Academy, which just last Tuesday, we all had the opportunity to celebrate their graduation here at council. The program, which had been on hiatus for several years, relaunched in 2023 with 42 participants. Jessica Davalos-Prieto, in our community engagement team, took the lead on redesigning and launching the program, and it just so happens that she's a City Management Academy graduate who later joined the city team. The program launched with some enhancements this year to make it more accessible. In-person attendees were provided dinner and childcare. And one significant enhancement to increase its reach is Greg Garcia, on the community engagement team, recorded all sessions, and they will be available to the public on our website. Over the course of the program, every department and charter office participated, so I want to thank all the departments for making it a success. The City Management Academy fosters interest in local government, creating more engaged residents, and in some cases, your next city employee, commissioner, or council member. Another program in our office that supports people is the Financial Empowerment Center led by Amy Williamson. Our office, working closely with the mayor's office in 2017, applied for and received a planning grant from the city's First Financial Empowerment Fund through the Bloomberg Foundation to explore the establishment of a financial empowerment center. The CFE Fund's mission is to leverage municipal engagement to improve the financial stability of low- and moderate-income households by embedding financial empowerment strategies into local government. Through the FEC planning process, it became evident that this tool could be complementary to our inclusive economic development efforts and could be key to supporting our financially vulnerable residents. The city subsequently received an implementation grant in 2019 and launched the Financial Empowerment Center in partnership with International Rescue Committee in early 2020. The timing could not have been better to have this infrastructure in place at a time when so many of our residents found themselves unemployed. The FEC provides free, professional, one-on-one financial coaching for residents 18 and over. Since the launch of the program, the FEC has assisted over 1,200 residents with various financial needs. A couple major milestones that should be celebrated are the reduction of client debt by over $1 million and increased savings of over $500,000. Having the Financial Empowerment Center has opened up the door to receive additional grants to support our residents, including a fines and fees grant, which looked at how city fees impact cities' most vulnerable residents, and in partnership with the police department, we have assisted nearly 1,000 low-income residents by waiving their towing admin fee, lowering a barrier for our residents to get their car back, to get their child to school, or get them to work. The city has also recently received a $75,000 grant through the City Start Initiative to focus on addressing wealth inequity, wealth equity. The grant provides the city planning dollars and technical assistance to identify strategies that will financially empower residents with a focus on the Black community. And most recently, the city received a $160,000 FE Cities Grant, which is an initiative to assist local leaders with growing their financial empowerment programs. The numbers are telling, but you can hear directly from some of the residents who have accessed the services of the FEC. You can find several more of these stories on our website as well. Another key way that our office supports people is our investments in the workforce development system. In order for our economy to grow and thrive, we must have a workforce that is prepared for the jobs of today and tomorrow. The inclusive economic development work in 2017, 2018 highlighted the importance of workforce development and the need to upskill our residents in order for all of our residents to have an opportunity to participate in Sacramento's economic growth. In 2018, our office added a workforce development manager to lead our workforce efforts and work with partner agencies and employers to align training opportunities with employer needs. The city's first major investment in workforce development came as a part of the 2020 CARES-funded programming. Council allocated approximately $10 million of funding to support workforce development programs because thousands of our residents found themselves unemployed as a result of the pandemic. With the CARES funding, our office partnered with 29 community-based partners to train over 2,500 residents. 410 were placed in jobs, 172 into internships or apprenticeships. This funding went to train and upskill workers primarily in the fields of IT, healthcare, and the trades. In addition to the investment in training, over $1 million was paid out directly to residents as stipends who participated in the programs. More recently, our office has been focused on Youth and Young Adult Workforce Development Program funded by a $6.98 million grant from the state of California through the Californians for All program. The program is designed to strengthen nonprofit and public sector career pathways for residents between the ages of 16 and 30 in the fields of climate resiliency, food insecurity, and COVID recovery. The grant pays the participant wages, and the state also allows the grant funds to be used for wraparound services, which means we have funds to support the young person's success. These wraparound services may include assisting with food security, transportation, and work attire. Thanks to Kevin Daniel and Aubrey Taylor, the program launched last year, and we currently have 15 organizations in contract to train and hire 280 youth and young adults. A few of those partners include Sierra Service Project, Sacramento Tree Foundation, Sacramento Chinese Service Center, La Familia, UC Davis, and Bridge Network, to name a few. We are also working with various city departments, including Public Works, Youth Parks Community Enrichment, and the Department of Utilities to support and grow their workforce programs. This program will serve approximately 500 young residents by the end of 2024, and just last week, we received approval from council to apply for an additional $2.8 million to fund these efforts through 2025. In addition to working to align training with employer needs, we also must remove barriers that prevent our residents from entering the workforce. We know the most productive economies have high labor participation rates. One such barrier is cost and availability of childcare. Even prior to the pandemic, this was a big issue facing our residents. In 2018, Councilmember Guetta convened the Early Care and Learning Work Group, who developed a set of recommendations for increasing access to affordable, quality childcare and early learning. In 2019, council heard those recommendations and directed staff to seek opportunities for implementation. In 2020, our office re-scoped one of our vacant project manager positions to focus on childcare, and were in the process of recruiting when the pandemic hit. The recruitment was put on hold, however, with the worsening state of childcare and council's ARPA investment of $1.5 million in childcare, we hired Janine Cooper in the fall of 2021. Since that time, Janine has worked closely with many partners, including Sacramento County Office of Education (SCOE), set a head start. First Five Child Action, Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition, to develop and implement the ARPA childcare framework. They collectively developed a three-pronged approach. The first component of the ARPA framework is childcare retention stipends. Through our partner Child Action, we provided 152 retention stipends to family childcare homes and centers to help address the rising operating costs to assist them with keeping their doors open when many had already closed. The second strategy is aimed at increasing the number of childcare slots in Sacramento. Through our partners Child Action and the California Capital Women's Business Center, 35 childcare homes have received the technical assistance and have become licensed. This creates up to 280 new infant-to-school-age slots in Sacramento. The final strategy is focused on growing the childcare and early learning workforce, since we know that is a top challenge facing the industry. According to one study, in the early months of the pandemic, the workforce, one-third of the workforce left. It is estimated that 10% never returned to the field. In order to address this, the city partnered with Los Rios Community College and local childcare centers to develop an apprenticeship program. Program participants are taking classes and receiving ECE credits, making them eligible upon completion to become associate teachers. They are working at local childcare centers, getting paid on-the-job training. In addition to the ARPA allocation, we worked with Consuelo Hernandez to secure a $394,000 grant from the Department of Labor for a second cohort to launch in fall of 2024. It is important to note that all of these programs have been funded with one-time dollars, so we are always keeping an eye out for funding opportunities in hopes we can continue these impactful programs. Before we wrap the people section, I want to highlight a few other programs that our office jumped in to administer. Great Plates Delivered was a program launched by the governor in April 2020 that provided meals to seniors. Our office worked closely with the mayor's office and peer transit to stand up a program that in-end fed 845,000 meals to over 1,000 seniors. This $19.5 million program, fully reimbursable by FEMA, kept many of our most vulnerable residents safe and fed during the pandemic. In addition to being an emergency funding program, it was also an economic support program, as we were able to contract with over 50 local restaurants to prepare the meals. This work allowed them to keep some staff on board to prepare meals at a time when restaurants were closed. Another food security program administered by our office is the ARPA Food Justice Grants. The mayor and councilmember Vang convened the Food Justice Task Force, which played a key role in identifying priorities for the $1.5 million ARPA funds. We are currently administering 18 grants. These grants have purchased several tons of food and have also helped organizations build their capacity to support the community by purchasing refrigeration units and refrigerated vehicles. The reported metrics from the grantees show a continued need for food that will last far beyond the terms of these ARPA-funded agreements. Lastly, participatory budgeting is an example of a new initiative that our office supports. Of the $1 million allocated to participatory budgeting, Of the $1 million allocated to participatory budgeting, $700,000, or 12 grants, came to us to administer. These are primarily related to workforce, entrepreneurship, and neighborhood capacity building. These programs and initiatives give you a snapshot of the many ways our office is supporting people. We focus on place next, and we focus on place because we want Sacramento to be the place where people want to come to live, work, play, and be entertained. By working with our city partners like Community Development and the Convention and Cultural Services Department, we strive to create a place where residents and businesses flourish. We focus on enriching neighborhoods and districts and helping create conditions where businesses will want to locate and where they will thrive. Our involvement varies based on the needs of an area. It often takes the form of convenor, facilitator, or implementer. The Old Sacramento Waterfront is a key example where our team works closely with the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, Old Sacramento Businesses, Convention and Cultural Services, and Public Works to enhance a district that plays an important role in our economy, as the number one tourist destination in the city with over 4 million visitors a year. A few recent investments in the Old Sacramento Waterfront, led by Ellen Sullivan on our team, include implementation of ARPA investments, which include partnering with the police department to install nine pod cameras, partnering with Public Works to replace gas lamp fixtures with new LED fixtures, and enhancements on the Old Sacramento Promenade. We also recently received a $1 million grant from Assemblymember McCarty for a Native American-themed children's play area, and are also looking to explore opportunities to re-energize the waterfront experience and increase visitor traffic. The recent work on the Old Sacramento Waterfront includes capital investments, but sometimes our work takes the form of more temporary activations, like the ARPA-funded City of Festivals Grants. The ARPA City of Festivals Grant is a citywide expansion of a program administered by Convention and Cultural Services in the central city. The citywide City of Festivals Program, led by Valerie Mamonie and Sabrina Teft, has invested approximately $400,000 to support 88 festivals located in every council district. Since the program is ARPA-funded, we envision only one more round of funding. In addition to the City of Festivals Program, you will often find our community engagement team tabling at events alongside our community ambassadors. Our work to enhance place must often come in the form of public-private partnerships. One example is Marco Gonzalez's work as lead facilitator of the work in the rail yards. As a major infill project, the rail yards is set to become one of Sacramento's newest neighborhoods while also becoming a major employment and entertainment hub. This project has required close partnerships with the property owner and many city departments to secure and deliver on millions of infrastructure funding. It has also relied heavily on creative financing tools like enhanced infrastructure financing districts and CFDs, which we do in partnership with the Finance Department and Treasurer's Office. A few recent highlights in the rail yards include starting work in partnership with Public Works on the backbone infrastructure, which is funded by a $30 million grant from state parks. Two residential projects are nearing completion and will add 495 residential units to the rail yards, and another 700 units are in various stages of development. Construction on a new $500 million courthouse to be completed later this year, and ongoing work related to a future Kaiser Hospital, and continuing to pursue opportunities for sports-focused entertainment and activation of the central shops. Another example of a public-private partnership is Aggie Square, which is led by Leslie Fritsch. Aggie Square is a partnership of UC Davis, Wexford Science and Technology, and the city of Sacramento. Aggie Square is where university, industry, and community meet to create opportunities for everyone, and was made possible in large part by the formation of an EIFD, which will yield approximately $30 million, including a 20% set aside for affordable housing. Construction of the $1.1 billion Innovation District project is on track for completion in first quarter of 2025, with the 200-unit residential building trailing behind slightly. The project includes 1.2 million square feet of medical office, research and lab space, a public plaza, and a 1,400-square-foot parking garage. In order to ensure the community is integral to the project, UC Davis Wexford and the city entered into a community benefits partnership agreement. The CBPA includes commitments for providing jobs and job training, affordable housing, better transportation options, youth education programs, and other benefits for local residents and communities of interest, especially those who have been historically underserved. With the construction approximately 65% completed, many of the targets are on track to be met, including 91 million so far in local subcontracting, 70% of the apprenticeship hours, and 60% of the journey-level hours by regional workers. Also, there's been significant public investment in housing, which will result in approximately 1,000 new units in the vicinity. There are also ongoing community engagement meetings, hiring events, monthly newsletters, and workforce programs that have been instrumental in bringing new opportunities for residents surrounding Aggie Square. The CBPA commits to over $50 million in affordable housing. In addition to housing development, there has been significant investment in housing programming with $2.4 million to provide housing stabilization, first-time homebuyer, and home electrification programming to homeowners and renters within the zip codes along the Stockton Boulevard corridor. It is estimated that about 300 families will be assisted across these stabilization programs. Other public-private partnerships that our office has taken a lead role on include the Ranch of San Miguel Market, Township 9, MOSAC, Iceland, and Alchemist Kitchen, just to name a few. In order to bring these public-private partnerships to our neighborhood commercial corridors, the NDAT was established in 2019 as a collaboration of the Office of Innovation, Economic Development, and Community Development Department. NDAT supports a community-centered approach to revitalization with a focus on racial equity to guide decision-making and policy, inclusive outreach and careholder engagement, investments, and resources. The initiative is led by Mikael Davila and Lynette Hall in our office, and Elizabeth Boyd in community development. The first two focus areas of NDAT are Stockton Boulevard and Marysville Del Paso. Both community planning efforts will wrap up this year, and in fact, Marysville Del Paso Plan, known as Forward Together, was made available for public review last week and will be coming before council in the spring. NDAT was designed so that community and the city collaborate on plans with the assurance that plans will be put into action. Immediately following the completion of the Forward Together Plan, the city will release a notice of funding availability for implementation grants, so community members and organizations can take a leading role in implementing the actions raised by the community. Although I have highlighted a few larger projects that you can physically see the progress, there are often years, if not decades, of work that happen in our office before a property is ready for development. A couple examples include the unwinding of redevelopment and the Brownfields Program. More than 10 years after redevelopment is eliminated, our office, specifically Leslie, continues to work on the unwinding. This includes annual reporting to the state, quarterly reporting to the oversight board, and property disposition and portfolio management in partnership with Public Works Real Estate. Many former redevelopment properties have been converted into projects, but it takes time, because many of these properties had challenges to development, maybe due to infrastructure challenges or the need for remediation, and to assist with that is the Brownfields Program. Environmental cleanup is a critical step towards the reuse of vacant and underutilized properties. The redevelopment of brownfield sites can be cost prohibitive, and our office has received several US EPA grants to assist with offsetting those costs. Since the program's inception, the US EPA has invested nearly $5 million in Sacramento's Brownfields Program. Most recently, Amanda Wallace in our office was successful in receiving an $800,000 grant for planning and remediation activities at Marysville and Grand. This work will be done in partnership with the NDAT team as the Forward Together Plan moves towards implementation. The Brownfields Program has also been instrumental in a number of programs throughout the city, including MOSAC, Curtis Park Village, and Warehouse Artist Law.
How much longer, if I might ask, Denise? It's a great presentation, but I think we want to get into some discussion here.
Okay, I was told 45 minutes, but I could definitely shorten it. So I'll wrap up the place section with housing, and so the housing work is being led currently by Yayan Ial, the city's housing manager, and the work is organized in these four strategies: Increase Housing Production, Keep &amp; Connect People in Housing, Build &amp; Grow Partnership, and More Resources, Less Barriers. This will be posted, so everyone will have the details on the four strategies. Okay, business, the last section. We'll get through it quickly. So in our people, place, and business framework, I will wrap with business because it is at the core of what we do in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. We strive to create the conditions that make it easy to do business in Sacramento. In 2021, the Scale Up Report, which was completed in collaboration with the Regional Prosperity Strategy, highlighted the industries above as opportunities for the region. The focus of this report was on tradable sectors, those industries that export goods and services and bring new money into the region. Since the adoption, the city and region have made great advances in many of these areas, but especially life sciences with the construction of Aggie Square. So how do we support major industry? Business retention and attraction are core to supporting industry. We must have a strong understanding of our existing businesses' needs and how we can help them stay and grow in Sacramento. Okay, while our larger businesses are certainly contributors to our economy, our small businesses are the heart of our economy and our neighborhoods, and they have struggled greatly in the past four years. Council invested $14 million of CARES funding and over $20 million of ARPA funding to small businesses and commercial corridors. I'd like to highlight a few of those accomplishments, but you can take a look at those up there. We learned a lot from the CARES-funded programs and used that information to craft the ARPA-funded programs, many of which are still underway. Two ARPA-funded programs recently wrapped up, which are contracts with the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative and the California Black Chamber. Through the two contracts, over 1,500 businesses were served by way of outreach that linked businesses to capital and other resources, and technical assistance, including business planning and marketing. Other ongoing ARPA investments include the All Fresco Program, which is an example of a program that was initiated because of an emergency that forced people to dine outside, but it was hugely successful. Our office worked in partnership with the Public Works Department to establish a permanent All Fresco Program and create an All Fresco Grant Program. The program has had great interest in our offices currently reviewing over 100 applications. Another successful ARPA-funded program is the Shop 916 Gift Card Program. The city has invested $245,000 in bonus dollars, which has led to $758,000 of purchased gift cards. This is all funding that goes directly back to the 118 participating small businesses. City Council also allocated $5 million of ARPA funding to the Northgate Corridor and $5 million to North Sacramento. Mikael Davila, Ginger Weigraff, and Michael Young in our office have been working closely with the council offices in the community to deploy those funds. The programs are still ongoing, but a few highlights so far are the opening of Taco Plaza on Northgate, 42 banners installed along Northgate, and a facade grant and transformative grant programs are underway in North Sacramento. All of this work could not have been done without our great partners, who you can see on the screen. So prior to the pandemic, with our limited resources, we invested in a much smaller scale in business assistance by way of business walks, technical assistance referrals, assistance navigating city processes, and economic gardening. And I do want to highlight economic gardening real quick. This is a program that launched in January of 2020 and has shown excellent results. The program aims to explore innovative ways to support the scaling up and accelerated growth of second-stage companies. These are small businesses well-positioned to experience exponential growth. The program includes two phases. The first phase, we work with the National Center for Economic Gardening to conduct intense market research to either solve a problem or look for an opportunity for the participating business. The business then works with our program administrator to develop a plan to implement. Once they have a sustainable business plan, they are provided a matching grant of up to $50,000 to implement. The third cohort of 10 businesses is in progress, but the first 16 businesses have reported some impressive outcomes. Of those 16 businesses, they have seen revenue increases of over 50%, and the businesses have collectively grown by 30 FTEs and have hired 12 Sacramento State interns. Despite launching the program, a couple months prior to the onset of the pandemic, 15 of the 16 businesses remain open, and only one closed due to retirement. I think the numbers speak for themselves, but here are a few testimonials from participants, and you can find many more on our website. We also support small businesses through our Innovation and Entrepreneurship Program. We had innovation grants that had been on hold since 2020, but we relaunched those last year, and there is certainly a demand. We received over 150 applications to either host innovation-centered events or ecosystem-building programs. We had requests of over $15 million, but only had $2 million to award. Those grants have been made, and programming is underway. I also just want to quickly highlight the Forgivable Loan Program, which is an important recruitment and retention tool, and it shows that Sacramento is open for business. We have one success story that I'd really like to highlight, which is a business that relocated from the Bay Area in 2018 to Sacramento with seven employees. We provided a forgivable loan of just less than $100,000. That business has since grown to over 150 employees and is looking to grow to 250 to 300 in the next couple of years. Their economic impact so far is estimated at nearly $168 million. So in economic development, we don't just focus on our nine-to-five businesses, we focus on all businesses, especially those that create vibrancy and make Sacramento a great city. Evidencing this commitment in late 2022, Tina Levoat joined our team as the nighttime economy manager. Since that time, and I can go through this quickly because she just presented to you late last year, she worked on the Sociable Economy Plan that came before council, and she has moved towards implementation of that plan in partnership with police, fire code, special events, and CCS, and is currently working with Convention and Cultural Services on code changes at streamline processes for creative businesses. So what's next? We have a busy year ahead, but my hope is that you all gained a better understanding of the diverse portfolio of our work in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. It is a team that is uniquely positioned to support a range of activities, from creating community programming, to assisting small businesses, to structuring multimillion-dollar development investments, and I'm so proud to be a part of this amazing team. So I want to thank my colleagues in all city departments, because all departments play a role in Sacramento's economic growth, and I want to thank our community partners who have been essential to delivering services to our residents and businesses. I'd like to end with a special thank you to our office's primary attorney, Michael Sparks. He represented our office when we were a small group of 10 and has stuck with us as we've grown and our portfolio diversified. When our portfolio grew exponentially at the onset of the pandemic, his did too. He's a true partner and has made it possible for us to get so much funding and needed resources into the community. I'd also like to thank Adriel Anderson White, Bo Parkhurst, and Steve Idagaki, and Jen Gore, who have also helped significantly with our housing and ARPA activities. Thank you, and Michael and I are here for any questions.
Thank you. Really, really comprehensive and, I mean, no, but it's quite a breadth of work, I mean, that you're doing and leading, that the team is leading, and I want to talk a little bit about it. The future is what I want to talk about. Great job. Okay, let's, do we have public testimony on, are we taking these one at a time? Are we going to do all the presentations?
Yes, so, Mayor, I have a public testimony on item one, but I believe it's for all three presentations.
That's fine, so let's, we'll wait then. Let's have a discussion among council, and we'll take public testimony at the end then. Let's start with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, and thank you for the thorough report, Denise. I'm really impressed with how your office tracks impact, like some of those numbers, looking at like total debt reduce, like how much money was leveraged, what the impact was, is really impressive, and so I appreciate that your office tracks that. I would love to see maybe in future presentations geographic impact, if we have some of that, like so we could get a better idea of like where we are reaching folks, where we need to do maybe more outreach. to do maybe more outreach, so we can get a better idea of that impact geographically. And in general, I don't know if you can answer this question, but since it's a budget sort of prep thing for us to get an update on what all the departments are doing, I'm curious how much of your work is general fund versus grant funded? I know we asked that a lot during the last presentation because they have fees that pay for a lot of their work, but, and you were referencing grants that paid for different programs, but do you have like an approximate split of like how much of your work is grant funded versus general fund funded?
So most of what you heard about today was CARES or ARPA-funded, so we are, like, operating budget is general fund, Measure U, so that covers the staffing. A few of the small business and innovation programs are covered through the Innovation and Growth Fund, but largely everything that you heard about today, with the exception of the Forgivable Loan Program and Economic Gardening, those are primarily one-time federally-funded programs.
That's helpful. It would be helpful maybe as a follow-up, just to get like a rough breakdown would be useful, because obviously if we're able to pull down federal resources to keep something like the Financial Empowerment Center going, then we should, but we're obviously going to be looking a lot at the general fund commitment to pull down that money and try to be thoughtful about what we do moving forward with that. So that would be really helpful to me.
Did your manager want to just speak to that?
Oh, yeah, and that was my last question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just very quickly, this is part of the challenge with CARES and CRF, their one-time funding, and you heard about all the great programs that they fund, and so the challenge we're going to have is, do we continue these programs versus more traditional programs, or some combination thereof? I thought it's important for you to hear all the things that we're doing.
Yeah.
No, it's an incredible impact, and like I said, to track those numbers, it's startling to see just how big the impact has been with a relatively small investment, but it is one of those, I imagine, one of the tougher conversations we're going to have as we move into this next budget, is what do we try to preserve that we think we could get grant funding for versus what we might not be able to preserve? So getting that breakdown would be really, maybe there's like a third bucket where it's like general fund, grant funded, and then like one-time ARPA CARES money, that maybe we could break it down like that, so we can see, get a better idea of where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Denise, great job. Really thank you for your thorough report. First, I just want to say thank you so much for your leadership and the entire team and department. What you all do day in and day out is the reason why we have a strong economy, right? And similar to Councilwoman Valenzuela, I think it would be important to kind of break down the, you know, the general fund, the grant dollars, but what I will say is that this department and all of these staff, we wouldn't be able to secure or implement these dollars without them, right? And that's the reason why your role is so important. And as I was listening to Denise and just listening to all of the incredible programs that we've implemented, this is really about building people, building neighborhoods, and really building our small businesses, which is like the backbone of our economy, right? We're in conversation about cuts, but we're able to have a budget because of them, right? And so it's a little bit of which one comes first, right? And this is so a critical, what you all do day in and day out is to actually help us have a general budget, right? And so I just really want to name that, and really wanted to uplift some of the programs, since I've been a councilwoman for three years, the impact that I've seen for my residents in South Sacramento, everything from the Financial Empowerment Center, many whom are from District Eight, and it's been able to really uplift them and help them in terms of financial empowerment, and really for them to get a hold of their finances, supporting our local minority businesses, right, our chambers, everything that y'all have done to really hold their hand through the pandemic and get them to this point. All of our initiative about workforce, right, helping our young people and making sure that our pipeline, our workforce is ready for the region. And then lastly, I have to give a shout out to Enda and our ambassador program, right? They are the folks that are helping our residents, our neighborhoods stay connected with resources from the city. And so I'm just going to reiterate, you know, this morning, in conversation with the Racial Equity Committee, we, you know, began engaging conversation about a potential tool, right? And I shared at the last workshop meeting that now more than ever, we really have to budget from an equity lens, because we got to do everything we can to minimize the harm on our most vulnerable community. I know there was a motion on the table during the committee that the mayor, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Lisa Kaplan and I, a director city staff, and Race Forward, to bring forth an interim tool for us to help us make these type of decisions. So I just really wanted to name that, and just want to say thank you, Denise, again to you and all of our incredible staff. We have so many key programs, basic services, but without, without all of these programs and initiatives, we wouldn't be able to really uplift many of our families from poverty. So I just want to say thank you, and these next few weeks and months are going to be really tough, but this is where that tool is going to matter, right, and how we can minimize the harm to our vulnerable communities, and just want to say thank you for all your great work, and looking forward to the next presentation. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just kind of want to follow up what my colleagues have already said, because for me, not being on budget subcommittee, you know, where stuff's going to come to the full council, but in preparation, as, as I look at things, I think what's going to be really helpful is a, you gave a lot of information, but even so much of a, of a summary of what the name of the program is, and is it general fund funded? Is it one-time funding? Is it grant funding? Is it federal funding? And then as Councilmember Vang talked about, when, when we think about tools, sometimes it may be the question we ask, you know, if it is a one-time fund, what is the economic impact that we are having in Sacramento, and does that multiply and actually grow businesses which will end up helping the city in the bottom line? Because as you said, we lost approximately 500 businesses. That's, that, that hurts. And so what is it and what programs do we have that can help as we look to make these decisions? Your, your departments live this every day and may have that information, but something that is short and sweet that can summarize when we look at it of, if we do the budget, we go, great, we all love this program, but we got to, it will only exist if there's additional grants or federal funding, you know? And there's, there's going to be so many of those that are going to be heartbreaking that we have to decide. Having more of an understanding of the impact, and is it, is it not just helping people, but is it helping keep businesses alive, people in their, like, is it producing things that are balancing, not just like the general fund, but our bottom line, keeping people in housing? Because I don't think any good decision, you know, is going to be made when you have to cut $50 million. We're going to have to make the decisions, but there's not one of us that are going to like the decisions that we have to make. So to the extent that I'm making sense of kind of what we're looking for, because I don't think there is a perfect tool, but as much data as we understand, what are we cutting? And what is that impact of that cut? If you've got that information, while doing this with your limited staff, being overworked, so I just want to acknowledge all the work that your team and your staff are doing, being limited in your capacity, and having these amazing programs in ARPA, and realizing ARPA is going away. And while we've created some really cool things for our community, like, how do we, how do we balance all of that? But I, that's basically the same question I'm going to ask every department coming forward, of how can we get something more succinct so that when we look at things, what is general fund, one-time, federally funded? Because I think it's important, sometimes some of these federal funds may require city matching funds, and it helps us get more of what, like, how do we balance all of that? I don't know the answer, but at least seeing some of that information in front of me, I think as we look at where does equity land, because none of the cuts are going to be fully equitable, more information is better than not, to the extent that you're able to, as staff, without working 24 hours a day. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Councilmember Kaplan, I appreciate the comments from all of your colleagues as well. After we get through these presentations, or there are going to be several briefings for the Budget and Audit Committee members, and also briefings to the full council as we come to the council at every step of the way. The critical date is towards the end of February, when we know what that number is. We will have considered all the various reduction scenarios. They will be presented to me in my office. I will make a series of recommendations for this council to consider, but you'll also have the benefit of all the other programs, and to your point, to, to get a little more specificity on those programs, so that you have an informed decision-making process.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Thank you for, Denise, thank you for taking the time, the time, to really showcase all the great work that you've done, and I know you couldn't do it by yourself, even though I know it's exceptional leadership in your department, but I just want to kind of piggyback on the staff aspect of getting this work done, and the body of work that's been done. So I want that your staff that's here, if they would stand up, so we can acknowledge them, if you will. And to everyone that stood up, I just want to let you know, you're doing incredible things. The presentation was outstanding. I'm hoping that the presentation will end up on the website, so people can, we can then direct people to go see all the programs that maybe don't know all the information that you presented today, but just great body of work, great incredible amount of work, and the impact is phenomenal. So I just want to personally just thank all the staff and the incredible leadership that's getting this kind of work done. Thank you.
Thank you. We got more? Done? And yet.
There was a pause.
Not even my turn yet, okay? Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know what, I, again, I also agree. Thank you to all the staff and everyone who makes this happen. You know, amazing presentation, Denise, and very much also a personal thank you to Leslie Fritsch, I know for, in our district and many districts, you know, the amazing amount of work and the legacy that, you know, she has put together for our city. And this, this comment probably goes for the next two presentations, so I'll probably just, you know, reserve my comments as, as well then, and to say that I'd like to see, you know, the opportunity costs of, that we could miss or by not investing. Here, this is one of the, the presentations where it's on the revenue generating side. When we look at bringing in a company from seven employees to 150 employees, what does that mean for our city? When we look at, you know, the work that, that Leslie did in coordinating with the community, coordinating with development, developer, and changing a, what was vacant parking lots into Aggie Square, which has hired and moved and hired people that were once baristas at Starbucks and now in middle-class construction jobs for apprenticeship, and that's less than, less than a couple of years. To me, that's, that's the, the opportunity cost of, okay, what's, where, where's the generator from? You know, that, I, I think what I'd like to see, and I don't know how we can, but those should be in the comparison, and when we look at these decisions of, okay, what are, what are going to help us continue to move that needle forward? If it's making sure that we're moving faster on the building permit side, if it's moving faster on ways to get small businesses up and going, I think, to me, those are the, the key questions I'd like to know versus a plain, you know, 15% across-the-board reduction because we have to. Okay, where, where are the opportunity costs? Lastly, I am just very proud of all the work that, that we've done on the area of early childhood education and childcare, the big shift, and I think this is a big takeaway that we've done in this city, is we moved early childhood education or enrichment out of what was normally in just parkour youth side and put it in economic development. And that's transformative, because we recognize that not only is that an industry, you know, providing childcare and small businesses and people who can open up their industry, but it's enabled the workforce to be able to get to work, to be able to provide for their families, and to have a safe place for their, for their young folks, and we've done that in the way of apprenticeship programs. I do want to recognize Janine Cooper here, who's there as well in that effort, and if we continue, again, it's one of those opportunity costs, if we, if we don't support workers and the needs that they have, like safe and affordable childcare, then, then they're not working, they're not producing for their family, we're impacted by our whole city. This is just, again, an amazing effort of work, and again, to underscore, what would happen if we didn't do this effort like other cities have? And we saw the study that came out that showed that other cities fared much worse in their loss of childcare centers, and who was impacted by it? Working families who didn't have a place for their kids, whereas in Sacramento, people could continue to support their families because of that effort that we did over the last few years. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, my, I guess, request here is, is that we try to figure out how to better analyze that opportunity cost, so that we can look at, okay, this is an investment in staff and personnel, but it's led to these outcomes. And to me, that, I think, is a, is, is a prudent way of, of looking at how, how we budget for this next year.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was somebody else up, or was that? That's me. Hey, hey. So this is both really inspiring and a little bit scary to me, and I want to explain why. And for the new members who have been here less than two years, you knew this as active residents of the city, but not as councilmembers, and I want to recount a little bit of the history, because it does speak to our challenges going forward. So, and Eric Guerra said it, I think, well a moment ago, when he said that we spend so much time on the expenditure side of the budget, that this is illustrative, this presentation of why it's important to continue to spend, if not as much time, a lot of time on how we generate revenue for the budget. And so eight years ago now, when I ran for this office, I ran on this platform of, of continuing the momentum, you know, that, that we, everybody felt after the Golden One Center and the Kings, and, and sort of this decision that I think the majority of Sacramento's made, that we want to be a larger, more cosmopolitan city, we want more economic drivers, we want more tourism, we want more industry, we want more jobs, and that it, and that it can't all be done on the public sector side, it has to be done in partnership with the private sector. And that was both philosophical in terms of where we want the city, what we want our city to be, but it was also practical when we think about the future of our public workforce and public safety, and the services that we have an obligation to present, to, to, to provide to people. Because if we don't continue to focus on building a tax base, then we're going to have more years of deficit than we do of surplus in being able to not only award the kinds of, and negotiate the kind of contracts we did over this last year, which I'm unapologetic for, by the way, like Councilmember Maple, or Vice Mayor Maple, I thought, spoke on behalf of all of us in a, in a written letter this last, this last weekend. Thank you for that. It's what we do, and we're going to figure out the finances, we're going to take care of our employees, but we're not going to be able to do that in the future if we aren't as focused on building that economic base. And frankly, economic development in the way that you've done it and we've done it over the last six, seven years has not been the way that the city has traditionally done it. I mean, we just haven't been in that business, and now we are. So here's the history part. We passed the full cent of Measure U in 2018, and one can take any side of this debate or divide. The bottom line is without that additional half cent, $65 million, is that what it is? Maybe a little more, $70 million? Oh my God, think about what the deficit would be in this city and what we would be facing. So it was a good and great thing that the voters said yes. But if we're honest about it, and this is why, this is mostly for the new members, because the poor city manager and the city staff and everybody else has heard this, has heard this almost every year at budget time. I campaigned for Measure U and led the effort, saying, not that all of it would go into the community and to inclusive economic development, but that we would have a robust and continuing strategy to invest in the economic future of this city with always a focus on racial equity and on inclusion. And so then COVID hit, right? We were going to do an affordable housing bond, we were going to do a capital facilities bond, we were going to do a whole lot of things, then COVID hit, but aha, we didn't throw up our hands. Instead, we took that CARES money and that ARP money, and we made some conscious decisions to save some of it for the city operations and our city workforce, as we've used it over the last year, especially in the negotiations, but we said we're going to invest a lion's share of this in a variety of community endeavors, a lot of it focused on economic development, from workforce to the IEDC and the other strategies that you laid out that we've implemented, done really, really well. And Measure U, though it is funding the Economic Development Department in large sense, and that's permanent, hopefully. hopefully, even with whatever tough decisions we have to make this, this spring and summer. But everyone's asking kind of the same question. What happens when the one-time money runs out? CARES and ARPA was a, was a one-time gifted investment. And yes, Councilmember Kaplan and everybody else, Councilmember Geda, you better believe, we, we have a very aggressive staff in looking at grant opportunities and leverage opportunities. But I want to raise a different question, and it isn't really for this year, but this is for the future and those of you who are going to be continuing here. Are we going to have an ongoing investment in economic development in our city from the city's general fund? Because we know what happened these last two years, rightfully so. The pendulum swung a little bit, and we said, you know, we need to shore up our city services, and we need to invest in our employees. That's good and great, and we all supported it, I supported it. But that doesn't mean the original vision of the Measure U, which was to get this additional half cent, to invest at least a portion of it in growing our economy goes away. So I challenge all of us in the, in future years to think about how we are going to grow this part of the city. Because if we don't, then I worry that we're not going to realize all of our dreams, and we are going to short our, our hard-working workforce and our basic services because we're not going to have the tax base that we want to need. Now, we got to continue to be creative. This EIFD idea, you've heard me say it, I think it should be much broader, much broader. And I know this may not be the year because of the difficulties, but as a long-term strategy, I think the whole city ought to be in EIFD. And we ought to construct it in a way that takes just a small, a sliver of the economic growth here and put it back into economic development. Because what we started out to do eight years ago was the right thing then, it's the right thing now. It's been uneven, in part because we faced a worldwide pandemic. We still have managed to do incredible things, as evidenced by your less than 45-minute report. But that, that, because that's how much, because that's how much actual material there, there wasn't is to put forward. But I, I just really want to put that out there because economic development really matters. It's not a sideline, it's not a, well, wouldn't it be nice if? And it's not all for the public sector, but we're a catalyst, whether it's EIFD, whether it's seed money, whether it's tax rebates, whether it's affordable housing, fee waivers, whether it is the program that you cited earlier about incentivizing the hiring of new employees that we did with, with Centene. This is really, really important, and I hope that the council pays as much attention to this in the future as we do on our core function, which is to make sure that we're providing those basic services. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's time for me to turn it over to
Yeah.
my colleague and great partner, Megan Van Voorhees, the Director of Convention and Cultural Services.
Of course. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. So we'll see. I see things working in the background here.
I know. Should I not touch it?
So while that's working itself out, Mayor and members of council, it's actually my privilege to be able to present to you for the first time in my three and a half years in person, as opposed to online. So I want to, want to thank you for that opportunity. I want to thank those of members of my team who are in attendance with me today, had the opportunity actually to do an all-staff meeting with the full Convention and Cultural Services Department two weeks ago at the Convention Center. And it was really delightful, actually, to see what our team can produce together, and it brings me a lot of joy. The team in attendance and the team that were there at the Convention Center a couple of weeks ago knew that I was working on this presentation. And I said to them, I've been thinking a lot about not just what we do, but what we do. And there's a distinction. I started my presentation, actually my talk with the folks on my team, talking about where we are as a society. And it feels really present for me today, understanding that there was another school shooting, knowing that we need to level set a little bit here, that the youth in our communities are struggling, that before the pandemic, in the 10 years leading up to the pandemic, rates of suicidal planning were like 40% higher than the previous period, and that it actually got worse during the pandemic. We're seeing right now the Surgeon General reporting out in 2023 about the effects of social isolation. 50% of adults are reporting that they feel lonely. 64% of Americans don't believe they can have a conversation with other people on subjects in which they disagree. Right? Our educational progress in the last couple of years with our youth, and particularly youth from communities of color, have actually receded. If you were in a community that was not well off to begin with, your rates of coming back from the pandemic are far worse than your colleagues and, or your, your folks in, in other cities. And we're also dealing with the fact that our downtowns and the decades of planning, the strategy that we had where we separated our live from our work and play, has now set up a situation where we live and work in one place and we play in the other. And that's what's left. It's the department that I lead. Darren Walker, who's the president of the Ford Foundation, said, "Art is not a privilege. It is the soul of our civilization, the beating heart of our society. During these perilous and challenging times, we need the arts and humanities more than ever before." In fact, the World Health Organization defines access to arts and culture as a basic human right. Why? Because actually, for someone who has experienced trauma, and there's a wide body of research to support this, if you've experienced trauma, it's almost as if the bridge is out, you can't get over it. But the act of creation, artistic creation, creates a new pathway. It rewires the brain and a pathway out of trauma. Hurt people hurt people, healed people can heal people. Richard Florida said in his Future of Cities presentation last year in 2023, and I'll give him nod to my colleague Tom Pace, who had sent the notes from that presentation, that who will rescue our cities in these times of, as we're trying to figure, figure out what happens in terms of vacancy in our retail corridors? He said artists and the cultural creatives, those are the people that we turn to in these times. In terms of community violence, the data actually says that a one standard deviation increase in social connectedness can actually result in a reduction in the murder rate and reduced theft. Higher levels of resident attachment contribute to greater growth in GDP. 50% of our infrastructure within the, the MSA, Metropolitan Statistical Area, in terms of cultural and creative activity sits in this city. And I feel pretty proud to be working for a department that can fuel the kinds of impacts and progress in terms of the society that we're facing right now. I really do. Our department concerned with the preservation and development of the cultural and creative life of the city and a vibrant and just tourism and creative economy. So it's my pleasure to be able to walk you through a little bit about not just all of that, but how we do what we do. Before we get there, just a little bit about the way our department is structured. We have the Safe Credit Union Convention and Performing Arts District as one division, the Center for Sacramento History, the Office of Arts and Culture, and our Administrative Services Team. We also have an array of partners, which you'll see on this screen, Mozac, the Crocker Art Museum, Fairy Tale Town, Clara, Sacramento Zoo, and Sacramento History Museum. Just to give you a little bit of flavor for what our staffing looks like, we have 140 FTEs at the Convention Center, nine in the Center for Sacramento History, 10 in the Office of Arts and Culture, nine. And then we also, which you might not know, employ five employees, so there are city staff that are at the Crocker Art Museum, and two that are the Sacramento Zoo. So I want to talk a little bit about this behemoth in the room, the Convention, Safe Credit Union Convention and Performing Arts District. Matt Voyer is the general manager, proud to have him here, work directly with him on an ongoing basis. Just a trip down memory lane, for those of you who might have, have seen this, this is the 1974 opening, you can kind of see what it looked like then, to the 1996 expansion, to the 2021 expansion and renovation that leaves us with this beautiful set of facilities in our city core. Who are we? So in this department, in this division, you have 60 full-time employees and 80 part-time employees. Those folks are operating in sales and marketing, theater and auditorium management, event services, operations, box office, and administration. And I just need to say about this team, they are very good at what they do. The food there is great, the service is great. I love going to experiences there, I hope you do too. A little bit about our in-house service partners, these four, Sedexo Live, responsible for catering, Ticketmasters, our ticket-selling platform, Encore is our AV, and Smart City is our Wi-Fi. And just a little bit, also in case you didn't know it, that the city signed a 25-year, $23 million naming rights deal with the Safe Credit Union in order to make possible many of the things that we saw happen here at the Safe Credit Union Convention and Performing Arts District. A little bit about how this work unfolds, because you might not be familiar about who does what. We define selling our destination in two buckets of business. Group A business is business that is two to five years out. Our selling partner on this is Visit Sacramento, they're great partners for us. Some examples of group A business here for you, Unified Wine and Grape, which was just in last week, they had, as I'm told, about 10,800 a day, it's very exciting, California Almonds, and SAC Anime. These particular, big events actually fuel TOT, hotel nights, very specifically, and have a citywide impact in terms of hotels. I just want to stop, I just have to do this because everybody knows that this is like my favorite thing, you all, you all know. SAC Anime is absolutely one of my, one of my favorite events. Some folks got an opportunity to see a photo of me when I was there recently. But why? And I want to speak to some of the stuff that I brought up earlier. So you go to SAC Anime, everybody likes to see all of the cosplayers that are outside, they're on the streets, they're out, they're engaging in community, right? But those folks are participating in an act of creation, when they're creating, they're building out their persona and identity. And then they get in the facility, and then they're there showing support for all of the other people who did that. And they're supporting each other. And then from there, you get to see some cool stuff. I saw Genshin Impact Panel, actually, for any of you who might be gaming people. It was pretty, it was pretty cool, right? You get to see industry development that's going on right there, people have an opportunity to engage, and there's a huge amount of shopping, and yes, I did shop, always shop. But that's the thing, in our facilities, in this type of facility, we're not, it's not just like a facility. We're bringing people together, we're building connections, we're growing industries. That's what happens in our shop. Just a little bit about the group B business, it's handled by the booking office. Group B businesses is, are those things that are kind of less than 18 months out, 12 months out. Our team handles that, some of these, the state of the hospitality industry, California International Marathon, and then also events at the Memorial Auditorium and the Performing Arts Center, just to give you a feel for that. Convention Center has 160,000 square feet of exhibit space and 80,000 square foot of meeting space, 37 meeting rooms. And I told the team last week, or two weeks ago, actually, that I feel like our facilities are like a 240,000 square foot hug for community right now. Little bit about our sustainability efforts. We are LEED Silver Certified, lots of activities underway in terms of waste management, energy reduction, water reductions, this core part of what we do, and we're very closely connected with all of the city's sustainability efforts. One thing you might not know, though, is what happens to food that's left over. So Sedexo Live actually will work to collect, they'll work with the Works of Mercy Homeless Outreach Program, and that gets donated to homeless populations. In 2022, it was nearly 20,000 pounds of food. Our Performing Arts Center, our lovely, lovely Performing Arts Center that we got off the ground with Hamilton in, in 2021, it's very exciting, about 2,000 seats. Most of the, of it, the activity at the Performing Arts Center is actually performing arts, so it's about 50%, about 40% graduations, and 10% conferences at this point. A few of the resident companies that are there, Broadway Sacramento, Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera, SAC Ballet, Speaker Series, and Sacramento Choral Society and Orchestra, those are the ones that we're actually working with as resident companies there. And then the Memorial Auditorium, Sacramento Civic Amenity, she is like the jewel in this district, the national historic landmark. The cool thing about this spot, many cool things, things that I've discovered, actually, the Keith Richards incident was not something that I was aware of, but it's famously known for Keith Richards nearly being electrocuted, performing the song "The Last Time," actually, kind of ironic. The cool thing about this facility is it, it is a national historic landmark, and it has one of the nation's last movable floors. And what that means is actually that there's an opportunity for you to have sporting events on the floor, and then the floor can be moved to rake for performing arts, to experience performing arts events. It's really cool. 3,500 seats. This facility has historically been known as a civic amenity for this city. Nearly 69% of our occupancy actually comes from graduations. Naturalization ceremonies have been a historic part of this, about 27% concerts, and 4% in terms of other performing arts activities. So last year, '21 to '23, the first few years, just to give you a flavor for what, what happened, we had 506 unique events, 314 performances, and 2 million attendees. It's a real driver in our central city. A couple of things to just share about challenges that are facing this particular division. Market operator consolidation. It basically means you're getting fewer and fewer people that are doing, that are, that are presenting nationally. Some might call it near, close to a monopoly, et cetera, but that market operator consolidation is affecting us. We have two to three new venues that are going to come online in the next 12, 18 months that are all going to compete with our facilities. We've talked about that as a team, actually. And I feel good about where we're headed. Part of this, as a leader and just for me, is just making sure that I'm working with the team and saying, let's face the facts, let's look at the data and figure out where the opportunity is. For me, that's a market orientation with a twist. Because the market is not serving everyone. And if you look at some of those other places and where those events are happening, you might see people that are left out. And I think as a civic entity, as the city, we have an opportunity to lean into our public purpose as our strategic advantage and actually make sure that the city is representing the diversity of the creative activity that's here within our facilities. There's enormous economic growth potential, possible, and I'll share a little bit more about that when we go to the Office of Arts and Culture. Within the creative economy, there is money that's being left on the table because the markets are actually ignoring a huge amount of potential in economic possibility in communities of color in the creative economy. So we need to lean into that, and we will. So if the Safe Credit Union Convention Center is like our, this amazing jewel, driving economic growth, bringing people together, all of that in the central city, then the Office of Arts and Culture is the vehicle via which we achieve reach in making sure that no matter where you live, you have access to arts and creative activities. Office of Arts and Culture is led by Jason Jong. We brought Jason on in July of last year, and I couldn't be happier to have him as a partner in this work. Just a little bit about the roles that the Office of Arts and Culture plays. Training and professional development for the field, information on the state of the field, we bring people together by convening them around core and key issues. We invest in terms of public art and making grants and infrastructure. public art and making grants and infrastructure, and other infrastructure investments, and we advocate on behalf of better policy in terms of the entertainment community and the arts. Just a little bit about this, what informs our work, some of these things, you might recall, last year we released the Sacramento Music Census, we followed that up with an arts and entertainment regulatory report, yes. Forthcoming, actually, is a report, Arts and Economic Prosperity Six, which the team participated in with others around the country, to get a sense of what the economic impact is, this was done in twenty twenty-two, so we'll start to get, to experience some of the first data out of that. And one that's forthcoming, that the Commission, Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Commission has seen, which is called Sprout to Growth, Unlocking Sacramento's Creative Economy Potential, and that particular report is very specifically focused, the lens that we took was we wanted to understand, where is the economic potential in the creative economy, particularly when we think about diversity, equity, and inclusion? So we were looking specifically for industries that are subsectors of the creative economy that were growing, and where there were high concentrations of people of color. So all of that, we're taking into consideration as we're doing this work. The policy that guides us, some of you were involved in the adoption of this policy, the Creative Edge Plan, it has six goals, arts education, advancing cultural equity, focus on the creative economy, artists and creatives, neighborhoods and districts, and investment. Everything that we have done is really guided by this particular strategy, and including our ARPA strategy for investment also ties back to this. Just a little bit about our twenty twenty-three grant making, last year, we awarded two hundred and forty-nine grants, you can kind of see the breakdown a little bit about where those grants were, were distributed, I think you might notice that a lot of that was one-time federal and state funds, nine-point-four million dollars invested. What's exciting about this, actually, there is a specific goal in Creative Edge that is related to investment, and a specific mandate that was made to us in terms of the Office of Arts and Culture was to step up and make sure that we were not leaving money on the table, that we were out there, and then we were securing resources to be able to, to support this work. We did that with a half-a-million-dollar grant from the National Endowment for the Arts, a four-point-seven-five-million-dollar grant from the California Arts Council, and then we were also able to continue our partnership, despite, we made some changes with Sacramento County, but we've, we've reimagined what that partnership looks like, and that new partnership has brought resources back to us for our cultural arts awards, and also leveraged two million additional dollars of their ARPA money to support ours in terms of the nonprofit community. A little bit about reach and impact, there's a little bit of a map, we, we have done a lot of work in terms of the county, both the city as the anchor and the county. Just a little bit about the impact of that, a hundred and forty-eight million dollars in twenty twenty-two nonprofit expenditures by Sacramento County Arts and Cultural Organizations, ninety-three-point-three million in audience expenditures. So when we're asking the question about what is driving the local, state, and federal tax base, there's fifty million dollars that comes just from that activity that they're producing, it's pretty powerful. How we're investing in the creative community now, we have six-point-two-five million dollars of ARPA funding left that we're working through, one of them focused on creative businesses, partly for the for-profit venues that call Sacramento home, also partly to advance the goals in that Sprout to Growth Report, where we're talking about establishing a creative business accelerator, and some of that money specifically in that creative businesses pool to help us address the regulatory climate, do better education, online permitting, all of those things. Arts journalism, designed to help people come back, get people out of their homes. We've been doing this great stuff, and we are absolutely doing the work needed, but we still need to get people to come out again. Artist support and youth workforce development, so six-point-two-five million dollars in ARPA that we're still continuing to work through intentionally, to make sure that we're both, we're advancing our race and cultural equity objectives at the same time as trying to get it out there in terms of recovery. It's all intention, it just takes time. One-point-four-five million is our ongoing support that supports the Cultural Arts Awards Program and our project support program that tends to focus on neighborhoods and grassroots-related activity. Just a little bit about professional development for the creative workforce, we had three hundred and thirteen people participate in programs in twenty twenty-three, the inclusion in the arts, given the amount of money that's actually going to nonprofit arts and cultural organizations, we just think it's critical to continue to make sure that people that are in the field are acting on good information. The inclusion in the arts, or inclusion for the arts series was specifically designed to elevate that community's understanding of systemic racism and how that's playing out in our field. Sacramento Creative Business Innovation Challenge, which is our first accelerator, done with unseen heroes and creative startups, and you can see a set of other activities, so it's field-building work, it's professional development. Sacramento Poet Laureate, for some of you who, who, yeah, who may know him.
I know him.
Andrew Defai, he received his laureate ship in twenty twenty, which was a terrible year, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were terrible for years, we extended it by two years. He received, he received an Academy of American Poets Laureate Fellowship in twenty twenty-two, and he used that to advance a little-known date on the calendar that was done by Mayor Ann Rudin, called Sacramento Poetry Day, and it's been growing, and I have to give some props here, the poet laureate, it's, it's an honorary thing, he will come to events, but if there's one person, Andrew has actually, he's just so stepped up into this role, stepped into it and really seen the job of a poet laureate is achieving so much more, and he did receive the key to the city. On the arts education front, we've shifted, so we used to do a lot of programming directly in the schools, and when we got here in the pandemic and all of that shutting down, we took a moment to evaluate, what is our role? With SCOE Sacramento County of Office of Education, we were really great partnership, and coming out of that, it seemed like, is this, is, does it make sense for us to be doing this work directly in schools, we think they can do it better? We worked with them to transition that Any Given Child Program to them, it's doing very well. We shifted our approach to a data-driven one, a systems-level approach designed to collect information on what the state of arts education is in our schools. It's going to become really important right now, Prop twenty-eight was passed, but there's no guarantee that all of those funds are going to be used as intended. We had, we've been working very closely with Twin Rivers Unified School District. This particular tool called Art Look takes school district, school building, and community partner data to give us a complete picture of what is actually going on in the schools. By the end of twenty twenty-four, we're on track to have three years of data, they have a seventy percent school participation rate, so with Twin Rivers Unified School District, we're going to have some good information about what's going on in terms of arts education. A little bit about Sacramento Film and Media, which also falls and is connected to the Office of Arts and Culture, they provide location assistance, production information in terms of folks that are here and available to people, ordinance and regulatory information, internships, this is one of the things that Jennifer West put together, we're super proud of it, recognizing that she didn't have a lot of support for what she's doing, she's one person, pulled together a program, it's very, a pretty cool relationship with SAC State, they come together, the students, they work for us in the film office, and then they have an opportunity, PA boot camp training, and then go off on site with a film production team, it's pretty neat. Also offer grant opportunities, and we're working on a film rebate program, or a larger film rebate. Just a little bit of data on the impact there, since twenty twenty, since the time that Jennifer came on in her position, three hundred and eleven permits, seven hundred and seventy-three days of filming, two thousand three local hires, twenty-four, twenty-four hundred hotel nights, and eight-point-three million dollars in Sacramento spend. The Film Grant Program, which was one of the, one of the first things that Jennifer and I did together when we got here, had a very intentional focus on elevating the voices of marginalized communities. We awarded a hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to that program, they spent seven hundred and seven thousand in Sacramento, so that means for every dollar that we invested in that program, we got four dollars and fifteen cents back. The Art in Public Places Program is a percent-for-art program, two percent of eligible construction projects in the city get devoted to art. Right now, they're about, well, let's say, we have six hundred and fifty works in the collection that we're responsible for, twenty-six active projects, one of which is the Hanami Line at Matsui Park, another one, which is this massive project done in partnership with Public Works, which is the Del Rio Trail. The team's also responsible for collections management, technical assistance work, community-initiated projects on public property, so the folks that, hey, I want to do a mural on that water tower, well, what's the process for that? This team is cost recovery, so there, there are three positions in the Art in Public Places Program, they're funded partly by part of the money that comes out of the public art program and percent-for-art, consulting revenue and state and federal funding. One of the biggest challenges that this particular team has is that, that, those cost recovery dollars are usually there in the beginning of the project, when we're doing, we're doing the work, but there's also maintenance work that needs to be maintained on these things over time, so we're establishing this collection, we're funding the team there at the beginning to be able to do these things, and we have to figure out how to make sure that the staff is funded so they can continue to maintain the work. And then a couple of those things, just frankly, we've done because we think it's important, these community-initiated projects on public property, the WX Mural Museum was one example, the state requires us to work with them, for a long time, this was at an impasse, we came together, we talked about it and said, hey, what can we do to help? But that's not funded, so our team, they spend time on these projects because we know they're good for community, and that's really critical, but the reality is, none of the resources necessary to be able to pull those things off, given the way that we're structured, so the things for us to think about moving forward. I'll defend that need to make sure that we're serving community anytime, to a point. I want to hit on the cross-departmental work that's going on here, you can just take a little moment if you're tired of me talking and you can actually read a poem. But there are two major projects, the four-point-seven-five-million-dollar Capital Region Creative Corps, we funded many, many grants through that program, and they're throughout the five-county region, but we also have five people on, the city staff now, who are deployed in different departments, two that are in Public Works, one in Transportation and one in Sustainability, one in Economic Development, one in YPSI, and one in CCS, and these artists are designed to be onsite doing communications-related activities. The poem to the left is actually from a grantee, Arts Benicia, which was one, we have the, the full region we're responsible for, they, they are doing a, a discussion that's looking at the state of water and climate change, and among the many things they did, they've got a poet. So it's the idea that we're using the arts as a way to communicate things when people stop paying attention, it's pretty powerful stuff. So kudos to that Capital Region Creative Corps team, many of whom I know, five of them, six of them, who are sitting in City Hall today. And the Florin Community Beautification Project, this is another important project, we went out, we secured a grant through the Clean California Program, one-point-one million dollars, designed to help improve and make cleanly that particular area, create murals, and, you know, you'll note when, when I started this conversation, I talked about the state of affairs that we're, you know, that we're dealing with, it is something special to come together and create work together, and actually begin to establish that sense of place and identity. Center for Sacramento History is led by Marcia Eymann, so we have the Convention Center and all of our partners that bring us together, we have the Office of Arts and Culture that's helping to build empathy, advance the economy, all of those things. The Center for Sacramento History helps us understand why we are here, how we got here. We collect, preserve, and make accessible the region's vast cultural heritage. It's pretty cool, I gotta say. We have public records, archive collections, including city of Sacramento and Sacramento County government and court records dating back to eighteen forty-nine. We are the most complete collection in the state, partly because San Francisco had the fire issue. You can access this information online, pretty cool. And we also have private collections, personal papers from individuals, families, businesses, and organizations that document life and people in the Sacramento region. Most recently, we got some papers from Mimi Miller, the Burnett Family Collection, there's some really cool stuff in there, and particularly one in terms of him talking about his experience in the war. Just a couple of other things here, there's a number of programs, you might be familiar with the Sacramento Archives Crawl, we also are engaged in the Sacramento History Day, and for some of you may be familiar about our, our Kids Collect Program that the Center for Sacramento History is engaged in, and I want to just pause here for a second because you may have seen the one that was done with the Maung Immersion School that we did earlier, and there was, there's a second one that's going on right now, and the population is very different from that school. These are kids that are, that are going to this school, they're transitional, they're there for a short period of time, they have some tough stories. As a part of the process, they had to, to tell stories about themselves, it was tough for the team to read what those things were, and a lot of these kids don't necessarily have artifacts. So we decided to partner up the arts team and the history team to use the stories that those kids created to create an artifact, and validate them about the importance, that they are important, that their story is important enough to this city to have a work of art created about it. That's powerful stuff, that I think is the opportunity, is more cross-departmental, cross-divisional collaboration among our team, and we're working to advance that. Just a little bit here about artifacts, we have thirty thousand artifacts documenting the cultural, social, and political history of the region, there's some cool stuff, you can see some of those neon signs, and also a nineteenth-century jail cell, it's interesting. We're running out of space. Oral histories, conduct oral histories at the center, including those with the first Sacramento GBT newspaper founder, as well as Sacramento's Mexican-American servicemen. And film, we have fifteen million feet of moving image film, this is pretty cool, and also, it's one of our, just an exciting way that people engage with us, is that there are lots of documentaries and et cetera that are made from here. Photographs, eight million in the collection, including the Tower Records Collection, yeah. We have volunteers, too, twenty-seven, in fact, in the last year, pretty exciting. The impact, this center's impact in the last year, a hundred and sixty-seven in-house researchers, six hundred remote researchers, nearly three hundred thousand online views, four hundred thousand YouTube views, and also, it's important to acknowledge that this team received the prestigious AASLH, American Association of State and Local History Award of Excellence, for its History of Racism series, and I know a lot of departments have had an opportunity to connect with that. And before I go there, there's one thing I do want to point out about some of the challenges that this particular division faces. Its location, which is on, or, off or near Richards Boulevard, has been, it's hugely challenging, there's flooding issues, there's all sorts of those kinds of safety things that we need to be concerned with, and that for us is a big question about what are we going to do in order to make sure that, given this rich tradition and collection and all of these things that we have, where are we going to put it to make sure that it's safe? I'll, I'll pause here and say that among the data points that I looked at in prepping for my team's presentation, for this presentation, is that people actually look to museums and historic sites to find, they're the ones that have the highest level of trust. So while they may be like watching documentaries and all of those other things, they turn to museums and historic sites because they trust them. That's really important for us in terms of maintenance of the collection, it's something that we care about and that we're working very closely on trying to figure out, how could we reposition the center and make its activities even more accessible than they are today? Lastly, CCS Administrative Services is led by Dustin Hollingsworth, Assistant Director. We have fiscal oversight, which I'm super grateful for that team right now, human resources, so all of that centrally located, we have the responsibility for working directly with our cultural partners and helping them with facility management issues. We have our own facility management that we do, along with the Old Sacramento Waterfront, which Denise touched on previously. Just a little bit, just a reminder again, all of these have our strategic partnerships that the city has with each of these organizations, they're all a little bit different, but they all definitely rely on us for support in terms of navigating city matters and also making sure that their facilities are kept up. Just briefly about the Old Sacramento Waterfront, what is our role? So Denise talked a lot about the work that they're doing, our role is the public spaces, the leases and the docks, so our team manages those things. Just on the deferred maintenance front, I gotta say, you know, there's some issues there, there's a lot of boardwalks that need to be addressed, we work very closely, you know, with the Department of Public Works, it's a partnership that we appreciate very much, but there are some realities associated with some of that deferred maintenance that needs to get addressed, and one thing to just point out for you, also, our partners, the Downtown Sacramento Partnership does a lot of work for us, liaison, two people in the district, overnight security, maintenance, activation, and events, they're a big partner for us, too. And just in case you were curious, there were four-point-one million visitors. And just in case you were curious, there were 4.1 million visitors to the Old Sacramento Waterfront in the last 12 months, and that's holding steady. This is a destination in the city. And you can see we break it down a little bit more that looks specifically at who's coming in, those that are coming from their home. There are folks that are coming from their home, they're coming to this destination, and then they're going back home. They're spending roughly two and a half hours in the district. The district is, is probably one of Sacramento's most distinct tourist assets. So that's why the deferred maintenance stuff matters. I want to kind of wrap up here just a little bit with River Crossing project that we did. A couple of weeks ago, we dedicated the River Crossing project, and it was years in the making, actually. This is an NEA funded project. It spells out the name of two grandmothers. It says, River Crossing, I want to communicate with you. And the families of those grandmothers were actually there when we dedicated it a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to bring this up because I wanted to close by bringing you back to where I started. That this department, which I have the opportunity to lead, privilege to lead in fact, has a real power to impact a lot of the things that we're needing right now. How people come together, how people interface with one another, establish empathy, all of those things. I think people are dying to communicate with each other again. And if our department can help impact that and make that possible, I think it's going to have some really great successes for us. Just one final story for you about just the work. I had a Chief of Police for the Cuyahoga Metropolitan Housing Authority, which is when I was there, we were doing a lot of work in terms of arts and health. And he was perhaps one of the most adamant supporters of the, of the role of arts in terms of what they were doing, because he would, he would tell the stories of how they arrive onsite and what they experience. And he said, he was the one who said, Andre Gonzalez, he said, hurt people, hurt people. Heal people, heal people. For me, I'm very passionate about this work, as you all know, if you can't see it. That's what we do. I believe that this department can help heal each other. I think it can also help heal our economy and grow our economy. It can heal our retail corridors. I think there's a lot of power here. So I just want to say thank you for having the opportunity for me to come and talk to you today.
We're lucky to have you, Megan. Thank you. It's a terrific presentation. Thank you. I want to make some comments, but I have my colleagues up first, and I'll start with Mayor Protem Talamantis.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan, you've done an incredible job in your role and really lifting up the department, being present in the community, being creative with what we can do and can't do, and if we can, then how do we do it differently? And you're just so creative, so thank you. Love the work that you're doing, just keep it up. And to anyone that hasn't visited the Center for Sacramento History, it's incredible. It's like Disneyland for anybody that's into history. It is amazing, and I loved my tour. And I share a wall with Vice Mayor Maple, and they come in quarterly to change the art so that we can see the different art that Sacramento has had throughout the years in our fifth floor city council area. So just thank you to Marsha and the team. So yeah, just keep up the good work.
That's great, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo the comments of my colleague. I think that you, you lead with such heart, and that's really important in these times, that it's not just the work, but how does that connect to the people? I know that, for example, the arts can be a really difficult thing to make a case for in government, right? When we talk about spending tax dollars and, and sometimes people don't view that as something that maybe government should do. I disagree. And I think that we should be investing in this because it's also how our community feels about the spaces that they're in, right? These are their spaces, these are public spaces. And so I really appreciate that you bring that with you and also that you grounded us with how it impacts things like mental health, right? And our youth, like, we know that those are huge challenges that we face as a city, as a state, as a nation, and beyond. And so what are the things that we can do here locally to, to make those changes? So appreciate that. I also, you know, being a gigantic history nerd, I, one of my favorite places and one of our favorite things that we do is the Center for Sacramento History. And, and the project that you were talking about is in my district. And that came to pass because I was so inspired by Councilmember Vang and the work that she did with, that I immediately, like, the next day called and was like, how do we do this in District Five? And then the choice to do it with a continuation high school was really intentional. How do we capture people who, young people who might not normally be engaged in these conversations, who might not normally have the opportunity? And that's, those are difficult conversations, but really important. And so, you know, I think that we're all going to have to figure out together, how do we protect the things that we do have in the archives? How can we make sure that we have a space that works? And what does that look like? Because I think it's one of the most important things that we have. And just as like a personal note, I go back and I look at things, especially what government officials have done in the past and going all the way back. And I've read, you know, letters from the city manager in 1920s and, and things that they had to say about I have. And I've learned from them because I can, because, you know, if we don't know our history, we are, we are doomed to repeat it. So, so anyway, I just really wanted to uplift that work to thank you. And because this has been done for the other departments, I'd love for your team to stand and please be recognized for all their incredible work.
There they are.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And just one last note, I know these are pretty long presentations, but I think that they're valuable in the way that this is not just for us, it's for the community, it's for people to listen in and understand, oh, wait, wow, that's not, that department isn't what I thought it was. They do 10 million other things. And we know that, but we need to make sure that our community knows that. And as we have the difficult conversations ahead, that we keep that in mind. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
I'll be brief. I just want to thank you for the education on the expansion of our greatest assets from 1974 to current. I'll, I'll say to current, even though we saw the, the difference between 1974 and 2021, we still see the growth today. Also, the, I had forgotten about the, the movable floor in the memorial auditorium. And, and, and I think we take it for granted that it's a national historic landmark. We take it for granted because as many times as we go there, and it's still 3,500 seats and has a $325 million economic impact. That's incredible. That's incredible. So the, the old bones that are in that thing and the sound is better than ever now. So I just want to, I just want to thank you for the work that you do. I wasn't paying total attention to you because you told me I could go to archives.org. And I have now found a new place that I can, can fall asleep as, you know? But I mean, like, you know, I can immens myself in all the different things that I see there. And at the same time, as I fall asleep, I can wake up the next morning and start all over again. So I'm really excited about this, and, and I just have a thousand ideas that I want to add to your plate. And the reason I want to do that is because I love your passion. I love your heart. I love what you do and, and why you do it. And I want to be a part, I want to be a part of that. And I want us to be able to talk more together. I've got some projects that I want, I really want to see if we can make happen, if not in 2024, in 2025. So thank you and your staff.
That would be a pleasure. And also, if any of you want to tour, the memorial tour is a cool tour. I'm sure we could arrange that for you at any time. So just reach out. Happy to do it. And also happy to help. I do care a lot about this, as the mayor knows, from the first interview that I had actually here. This stuff is important. It's who we are. Sacramento is Sacramento, it just doesn't need to be anything else, you know?
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, I want to second the memorial auditorium tour. I loved going back there with Matt and the team. If you look at the mechanics of those floors, it's like giant springs that are moving around. It is crazy cool to see, and it was so, developed so early on, and it's still working, and it just blows my mind. But yeah, obviously, thank you for the passion. I think you articulated your alignment with our city priorities so well and so clearly. And I just really want to appreciate you for that. And to highlight both that, I mean, this is a key way that we're going to revitalize downtown. And I mean, we saw that when the concerts in the park came back, we've seen that with some of the other activations that have happened. This is one of our key strategies, but particularly something my colleagues might not know, is that the music industry in our town, like, we have folks who are from here, who are nationally known, who have fantastic careers that they developed in part by leaving Sacramento. And, and that's one of the legacies that we need to confront, is that we are still have a long way to go to ensuring that this industry can thrive here and that it can be the economic driver in addition to the thing that brings people here, because they want to see those people who are now, you know, successful in New Orleans or successful in Los Angeles, they want to see them here where they're from. And we can create that experience here. So really want to just echo what you were saying about economic development and just the alignment with activating our public spaces. I'll ask the same question probably of every department, so this will be a good preview for next week about, you know, general fund versus one-time fund versus, you know, grant funds. Be really helpful to understand how you're leveraging resources so that as we have these discussions, we can be really thoughtful. Because like that Kids Care Collect Program, I think we're one of the next ones in line, if not the next in line. I'm really excited about that.
I love that there's a line.
There's, I want, well, I'd call Deb's on next then, because I think it's, like, like you said, those are such powerful programs to capture a young person before they start to believe that what they see is all it can be and to really help them understand and process who they are and who their community is. I'm just really, really excited about bringing that to District Four hopefully soon and have a couple of schools in mind for that. But just want to make sure that we're being thoughtful as we move into this budget about, you bring down a significant amount of outside money, whether it's through ticket sales, whether it's through something else. And I want us to really understand that. So as we're looking at ways to be really surgical about protecting our structural deficit, that we can be really intentional about not cutting ourselves off from something that could be really wonderful for our community in the long run. So, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep this short. Megan, I just wanted to say thank you for your passion, your heart and your hustle for this city. And I really appreciate just your intentionality, you and your team, of where you actually even spend your resources, your art, your limited art resources. I just want to name a few projects that you and your team have worked on from the Center for Sacramento History, working with our Susan B. Anthony students in South Sacramento, ensuring that there's an exhibit here at City Hall so that they can see their stories reflected literally in the People's Building, right? I also want to give a shout out to Donald. We're trying to do more arts in South Sacramento from the kinetic art. We're having some issues with that, but I know we're going to get there soon. But even our box wraps, right? I think oftentimes, what I hear from the community is that we always see arts in downtown, we never see anything in South Sacramento. And working with your staff on the box wraps, the, the box wrap art, I know we're going to be in the process of trying to revamp that, but thank you for always making South Sacramento a priority. That's really important, right? It's not just about downtown, I love downtown, but you're also, your team's also thinking about the neighborhoods that are left behind. I just want to say thank you, because intentionality matters. And when we think about the arts, and you said it yourself, it's really about health and well-being and how people feel connected to spaces. It's what keeps a city alive, right? And so I know there's going to be these tough conversations about, about budget, but you can count on me to be doing everything I can to really protect, you know, the critical services that you all provide. And I'm just, I'm nervous. I'm nervous for the upcoming budget, right? Because I know what it can mean for various departments, but just, just know that all of us see you here, you see the work that all of y'all are doing. And just so appreciative, and we got to do everything we can to, to, to make this work and figure out how we can continue the great work that y'all are doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll try to keep this long, if I can.
Two minutes.
So again, I think we're really lucky to have you and, and all of the people on your team who, you know, to a person, you choose this kind of field because you're, you're really committed to the community and to the work. This is love. And I want to also thank the city council, because during the ARPA period, this city chose, the city council chose to invest more money in the creative economy by percentage than any other city in the country, by any other city in the country. That was conscious. And we did it because we all believe in what you said, that this is not, this whole, all these areas, that this is not a luxury. It's not an elective. It's not a wouldn't it be nice? And it is hard in the governmental context, there's no question, when arts are pitted against core and basic public safety. But it doesn't have to be pitted against, because not only is this an economic driver, it's the soul of our city. Without all of this, we're lesser than. And you know, I know we're all sports crazy, and I know I am, right? Go Niners. And Kings and Republic and, but you know, great cities prioritize art and culture as much as they do sports. And I think we have a long way to go, but boy, I think we are making that statement in this community. I think about 2024, some of the signature opportunities, even in the midst of the general fund budget crisis, because some of this, as you alluded to, is TOT, hotel tax. And remember, we spent, excuse me, we passed in 2022 Measure N, the, what I call the sleeper of the election season, that allows us to spend that debt capacity on projects, anything that supports tourism, which is mostly culture, art, and music related. So this year, in 2024, we are going to bring to the council more tangible steps. We're not going to get the work done by the end of 2024, but we're going to set firm direction to complete the build out of the downtown rail yards around sports and music. We're going to finish the convention, we're, we're going to make a decision about the Convention Center Hotel. We are going to bring forward the long awaited plan that was going to happen pre-COVID but got delayed to modernize the Old Sacramento Waterfront. We are going to provide direction for South Sacramento, and I'm looking at both Councilmembers Geta and Vang, to make a decision to fund a regional youth sports facility or facilities in South Sacramento. We have to, we're going to have an agenda, as I understand it, in March on the arts and entertainment permitting reform, correct? So that we can have live music on Monday nights and Wednesday nights throughout the city without a lot of, without too much process and permitting requirements, all consistent with public safety. And this is going to be a big year. So let's not forget all of that and more, even as we're grappling with the difficult budget situation that we have. Thank you.
If I can actually respond just to that on the one-time funds, because I know this comes up specifically related to arts and culture, and I would have brought it up at the time. We are really trying to be very strategic about the use of those funds, because we didn't go into that thinking there was going to be like all this money afterwards, right? Like, we knew that we had to do it, and it was intended for recovery. And so that's how we're, we're placing strategic, we're engaging in strategic partnerships, and we're trying to identify those things as we build these demonstration models that we can take for funding from other sources. And that's absolutely intentional. So just know that that's something that we're doing. And also just happy to bring forth any additional information so you guys can understand better our budget. And also just accept the responsibility that we have, that these are amazing facilities, and they can generate a huge amount of revenue for the city, and they should.
Great, thank you. All right. We have one more important presentation. That is Mr. Pace, welcome. I will be back in just a minute. I'm not leaving just because you came out. I'll be right back, okay?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Tom Pace, Director of Community Development. Just to give you an overview of how we're organized in our community development department, we're comprised of these five divisions that you see on the screen that focus on city development, property maintenance, regulation of businesses, and care for animals. Our Assistant Director and Head of Administration is Candace Naguchi. Our Planning Director is Greg Sandland. Our Interim Chief Building Official is Bob Latz. Our Code and Housing Enforcement Chief is Peter Lemos, and our Animal Care Services Manager is Philip Zimmerman. Our activities have a significant impact on the development and maintenance of housing, protection of public health and safety, and support of the city's quality of life and economic development initiatives. We are also integral to the city's infrastructure development, climate initiatives, and homelessness response. The overwhelming majority of our staff and budget resources are devoted to activities that are mandated by law or essential to the public welfare. Everything we do in community development is underpinned by our commitment to promote, enhance, and protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. Supporting all CDD activities is our admin team, which provides centralized administrative support to our entire 319-person organization. In addition to providing internal support, our admin team also handles development-related financial transactions for multiple departments, including finance, including finance, public works, utilities, and youth parks and community enrichment. The community development's overall budget is nearly $54 million, but the cost of the general fund is reduced by about 70% by revenues we collect, primarily in the planning and building divisions in support of development activities and also from code enforcement fees and charges. Along with the building division, the planning division plays a key role in the development of our city. The role of city planners is to help us anticipate and meet the needs of a changing world, especially as it affects us here at home. Planners analyze trends to see where we might end up, and they help us determine whether to embrace those trends or take actions to change course for the better. Planners do this through long-range planning that looks decades ahead and current planning that evaluates development projects happening today. They are supported by environmental planners who help navigate federal and state environmental laws, urban design architects and preservation planners who help shape the look and feel of new development and preserve our heritage, zoning staff who provide customer service, keep regulations up to date, enforce zoning requirements, and conduct public hearings, and our new growth planners who focus on annexations and the special needs of the Natomas Basin. The planning division faces two key challenges. One, the extremely high number of planning and housing-related bills passed in the state legislature over the past few years creates a heavy workload for staff to track and implement and remain in compliance with the state law. And two, in addition, there are a large number of locally inspired innovative programs and policies that require planning staff time to develop and implement. Long-range planning leads the city in preparing our long-term development vision and policies, contained in the general plan, several specific plans, transit station area plans, and our climate action plan. Long-range planners have had a major impact on the new course of development the city has charted over the past 15 years. Prior to 2009, nearly all growth in our community occurred at the edges of the city by converting greenfield farmland into new subdivisions, office parks, and shopping centers. Most of that prior development was designed around the car, forcing new residents to drive nearly everywhere they needed to go. Meanwhile, the downtown and midtown core, older neighborhoods and dying warehouse districts saw relatively little reinvestment. Since the general plan update was adopted in 2009, which was the first major general plan update in over two decades, Sacramento has blossomed with new infill development. This is a direct result of new planning policies that have made it easier to build in struggling neighborhoods, pockmarked with vacant lots, and to revitalize aging industrial areas, old shopping strips, and of course, our central city core. Long-range planning staff help the community understand the environmental, economic, and social consequences of the status quo and the potential of a new planning paradigm that would reshape our city into a more sustainable, equitable, and economically vibrant community. As a result, thousands of new residents now live within walking distance of light rail and bus transit, major employment centers, shopping, education, and recreation areas. The city's outward expansion has slowed and the revitalization of older neighborhoods has advanced. This is planning in action. Yes, it's a lengthy process and change happens incrementally, but our successes are a result of the council's consistent commitment to smart planning over the past 15 years, and that will pay dividends for decades to come. Outreach and community engagement is essential to developing plans that reflect our community's needs. CDD partners with the City Managers Office of Community Engagement, led by Lynette Hall, to help ensure that we reach as broad a cross-section of our community as possible. Housing planning includes a significant focus on affordable housing and homelessness prevention. This team works with our city housing manager, Yaoyan Ail, the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, the Capital Area Development Authority, and other agencies and organizations to help achieve these goals. And also note that our neighborhood planning team, which is a component of the Neighborhood Development Action Team, is really a new initiative of the city to have investment in neighborhood planning, which is something that we haven't done traditionally, and we're doing it in a new way, which is really a grassroots, community-led effort. And it's, it's very time-consuming and resource-intensive, but I think it's going to really bear fruit as we think about the redevelopment of Stockton Boulevard and other older commercial corridors and assist in the advancement of the Forward Together planning in North Sacramento as well. The city of Sacramento was the first jurisdiction to be awarded the Pro-Housing Designation. This designation is awarded by the state based on a point system. Sacramento still has the highest score in the state. Being the first jurisdiction in the state to be awarded the Pro-Housing Designation provided long due credit for what the city has been doing for over a decade to streamline housing production. It also helped shine a light on best practices that other jurisdictions can adopt to help alleviate the statewide housing crisis. Some factors behind the city's high Pro-Housing score include ministerial housing approval, waiving fees for affordable housing construction, consolidating and simplifying fees for all housing, allowing housing by right in commercial corridors, speeding approvals for accessory dwelling units, which I'll talk more about on the next slide, and reducing or eliminating parking requirements for new housing. With this designation, the city has benefited from state funding by being more competitive. Last year, we were awarded $2.5 million, due in part to the city's high score and population size. Accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are an important way to create attainable housing and add new housing in existing neighborhoods. Due to changes in state law and city zoning regulations, the number of annual ADU permits has quadrupled over the past four years, from fewer than 100 to nearly 400 units. Long-range planning staff recently utilized state grant funding to develop the ADU Resource Center for anyone looking to develop an ADU. The website explains the process from start to finish for how to plan and build an ADU. This is just an image of, of part of the tool that's available, which is called Symbium, which helps allow you to evaluate your property to determine the right ADU size and location and considering the zoning regulations. So you can put in your address there and it will show you where you could fit an ADU that meets all of the requirements. Additionally, the city now offers free, permit-ready plans that are designed to be affordable to construct. Current planning and zoning sections review development for consistency with zoning standards and help facilitate construction of new infrastructure by coordinating the development process with staff in parks, public works, and utilities, as well as outside agencies such as smud and regional sanitation. Nearly all new roads, parks, and water, sewer, and drainage pipes are built by new private development projects that are reviewed and approved by current planning staff. Without their work, nearly all new buildings, subdivisions, parks, and infrastructure in Sacramento would not be built. Current planners are at the front lines of development and help ensure that the vision, goals, and policies of the general plan are realized. Zoning investigators enforce zoning regulations by responding to complaints about zoning violations. You can see some of our statistics there. For the past 15 years, Sacramento has had a philosophy of rewarding projects that are consistent with the general plan, with a clear, predictable, streamlined process. Prior to this change in development philosophy, every project was subjected to the same level of scrutiny and onerous process, even ones that met all city policies and planning objectives. In essence, good projects were treated the same as bad ones. This tended to result in fewer projects being approved and less infill development occurring. Today, the majority of projects are decided at the staff or director level. For example, in fiscal year 23, the planning division processed over 700 planning applications. Fewer than 50 applications, or about 7%, required commission or council-level review. At the same time, public notice through improved signage, automated emails for interested parties, and online mapping of projects have helped to solicit public input earlier in the process when recommended changes are easier to accommodate. Planning staff support the work of the Planning and Design Commission, one of the most powerful and influential bodies in Sacramento. The Planning and Design Commission's work centers on both planning policy items as well as private development projects. The Planning and Design Commission took action on approximately 29 development projects this past year, either rendering the final decision or recommending approval to city council. Projects predominantly consist of requests for conditional use permits related to cannabis, alcohol sales, or to construct a telecommunications facility such as a cell tower, as well as legislative entitlements such as rezones or general plan amendments. In 2023, the commission advised on seven different policy items, some of them multiple times, including the 2040 General Plan, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, and the Missing Middle Housing Study. Environmental planning protects the public health and safety by identifying potential neighborhood and negative environmental effects of projects and ways to avoid or reduce those impacts. Every capital improvement project, development project, and other activities that may have an effect on the environment must be reviewed by Environmental Planning Services for consistency with the California Environmental Quality Act, National Environmental Policy Act, and other environmental permitting laws. Council staff reports are often reviewed by environmental planning staff to ensure that the environmental consideration section is prepared correctly. CDD environmental planners work with our partners in public works, utilities, parks, and other departments to identify environmental issues in proposed projects, prepare the scope of any required environmental reviews, oversee consultants who prepare environmental impact reports and other environmental documents, and ensure mitigation measures are monitored before, during, and after construction. Environmental staff also work very closely with the city attorney's office to protect the city from litigation because environmental lawsuits are very easy to file. Proper environmental compliance saves the city millions of dollars in lawsuits, fines, and penalties. Environmental planning staff also coordinate the city's review and comment on other agencies' environmental documents. When the city receives a notice that another agency is preparing an environmental document, environmental planning circulates the notice to affected departments and facilitates a consolidated city response. This work helps us ensure that the city's interests are protected by working to ensure impacts to the city are avoided or mitigated. Urban Design's focus is on quality of life. The architects and planners of this section work to make Sacramento more beautiful, and their work helps ensure new development fits in with existing communities. They prepare design guidelines and review development plans to ensure that they have quality design and are consistent with city standards. Historic preservation documents and preserves architectural landmarks and historic sites and districts. More recent preservation work builds on the city's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion by focusing on preserving the history of people from underrepresented groups, including the African-American Experience Project and our new LGBTQ+ Experience Project. The African-American Experience Project, funded through a $50,000 grant, was a dedicated effort to research and document the African-American history in Sacramento. This project marked a significant shift in preservation practice in our community by acknowledging the need to study, record, and preserve the history and built heritage of underrepresented communities. This is consistent with the council's priority for diversity, equity, and inclusion. The project filled a crucial gap in the preservation of Sacramento's history, supported by significant contributions by individuals and community organizations. Staff are currently pursuing a grant to develop a local school curriculum so this history can effectively be passed on to our future generations. The project created a model approach to seek out other gaps in the city's history. This year, preservation staff will begin grant-funded work on the missing history of Sacramento's LGBTQ+ community. New growth and annexations is focused on development in Natomas, other areas that were recently annexed into the city, and areas that may be annexed in the future. A key function in Natomas is administering the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, which protects rare, threatened, or endangered plants and animals and ensures the city stays in compliance with federal and state environmental permits that have been issued to the city. The Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan addresses the impacts of development in the Natomas Basin and satisfies both federal and state environmental laws by minimizing the impacts to covered, rare, endangered, and threatened plant and animal species, and includes mitigation measures for those impacts of development that cannot be avoided. For 25 years, the city has implemented HCP requirements, including annual reports, pre-construction biological surveys, collecting HCP fees, and conducting field visits to monitor progress. The city closely coordinates with HCP partners, including the Natomas Basin Conservancy, Sutter County, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And you can just see there an image of some of the beautiful habitat that is being preserved because of these efforts. Participating, let me go back here. Participating in the HCP provides developers a means to satisfy obligations imposed by the federal and state Endangered Species Acts and the mitigation monitoring plans. This is an efficient, streamlined, and cost-effective approach that provides biological mitigation in a more comprehensive fashion than a piecemeal approach. This also allows for efficient time savings for the developer since the biological mitigation is satisfied by compliance with the HCP and the city's permit coverage. Otherwise, the developer would be subject to a separate, lengthy permitting process. The other half of CDD's development group is the building division. Public safety is the top priority of the building division. Depicted here is the new Safe Credit Union Convention Center, a project of our Convention and Cultural Services Department that was supported by the building division, which helped ensure that it was designed and constructed to protect the safety of visitors who come here. Excuse me, just one second. Three key challenges for building include, one, a loss of highly experienced building inspectors due to generational turnover and retirements means that vacancies must be filled with staff who are relatively newer to their careers. Two, a lack of people entering the construction trades means both the public and private sectors struggle to deliver much-needed housing. And three, in addition to state mandated legislation passed annually, every three years, the state updates the building codes. While this process has resulted in higher safety and energy efficiency standards, it also has made construction increasingly more complex and costly. For nearly all development, permit services is the first stop. These staff are the front line in greeting anyone who visits our offices at 300 Richards Boulevard. They assist customers at the permit counter, online, via email, and by telephone. They process plans for permit issuance, and they verify and collect fees, not only for permits that we issue, but also transportation, park, and utility development impact fees that pay for new and expanded infrastructure throughout the city. Our project management team offers a unique service to customers of larger projects by serving as a single point of contact for the building permit process, which can be quite complicated and technical. Our project managers help our customers navigate the process and meet their construction goals. In most other cities, applicants do not get this kind of concierge service and must figure out how to move their projects forward on their own. We are currently considering how to extend this service to our small business applicants who are often inexperienced in construction projects and could use a similar kind of help. Constructing a new building is a complex process, especially in California, where national building standards are made even more stringent by the state. This means that an owner often must hire licensed professional architects or engineers to design a building that will meet the California building code. But the development process doesn't stop there. A new building must have road access and tie into water, sewer, and drainage infrastructure. The building division coordinates construction plan reviews with our fire, public works, and utilities departments, and with smud, regional sanitation, and other agencies. All this coordination is complex and time-consuming and requires highly specialized staff, both at the city and on the private development teams, and it can take four to six months to complete before a permit is issued. We publish online how each, how long each cycle of review should take, and we routinely meet or beat those deadlines. We offer pre-application meetings for project proponents so that they can learn about the process and have as few surprises as possible. Our plan review staff complete about 18,000 plan reviews each year and are typically 2.8 days ahead of the time that we promised to complete them, with 97% of them being completed on time. with 97% of them being completed on time. Do you have a water for me? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We offer pre-application meetings to project proponents so that they can learn about the process and have as few surprises as possible. Over the past five years, we've processed building permits for projects valued at over $7 billion. Once building plans have been reviewed and approved and permits have been issued, our building inspectors handle the final part of the process. A new building or major remodeling will require multiple inspections for several stages of construction, from foundations to framing, from electrical to plumbing, and fire safety and disabled access. It's up to the general contractor to request each inspection. At each stage, they are advised as to which inspection comes next. Building inspectors ensure the construction is consistent with the approved building plans and meets the minimum standards of the building code. If not, they will write a correction notice and will return once the work has been corrected. The Building Division embraces innovation. They use technology to accept all permit applications online and use software to review plans electronically. Permit status information is available online to all applicants. We constantly look for ways to improve our service, and I have an open invitation to any applicant who has done business in another California city to share what they do better than we do, because I'm happy to learn from others and apply those lessons here. In response to state legislation and we created, rather, the legislation that mandates an automated permit process for specified solar permits, the city has implemented a service called Solar App Plus. This tool allows an applicant to submit a building permit application online and receive automatic permit issuance the same day. Code's focus is on maintaining the city's housing stock, protecting the public safety from blight, nuisances, abandoned vehicles, and dangerous buildings, and ensuring that businesses operate within state and local guidelines. A more recent focus area is addressing the negative impacts of unsanctioned encampments on private property and in abandoned or dangerous vehicles on city streets. Homeless response is carefully coordinated by the Department of Community Response, with Code staff providing a significant support role. Three key challenges for code enforcement include: One, other local agencies have successfully recruited our code enforcement staff with lower workload and higher compensation. Two, as the city identifies ways to provide alternative public safety response, this often includes an increased role for code enforcement staff. And three, code staff are taking on more responsibilities to address community concerns, such as tenant protection, vacant lot registration, homelessness response, street vending, and the growing entertainment-related activities as the downtown and midtown economies have shifted from daytime office workers to nightlife. Some of the primary tools used by code enforcement are issuing a declaration of public nuisance and order to correct violations. If violations are corrected, no further action is needed. Next, administrative citations, ranging from $250 to $25,000 per day, can be issued to owners to encourage compliance. Three, abatements involve the city or its contractors removing blight or fixing code violations in severe situations where the owner is unable or unwilling to correct an imminently dangerous situation. And finally, in very serious cases, our city attorney's office can file lawsuits, injunctions, and criminal prosecution against problematic property owners to compel compliance. Just a few of Code's activities include graffiti abatement, rental housing inspection, and dangerous building inspection. The Code Enforcement Division's graffiti abatement team consists of two full-time painters who respond to complaints citywide for graffiti on city property, sound walls, bridges, and other infrastructure. In 2023, they responded to over 2,400 complaints and removed approximately 400,000 square feet of graffiti, requiring 2,000 gallons of paint. The team documents each graffiti case with time and date-stamped photos to assist in potential prosecutions. So just to give an idea of how much paint that is, you can paint approximately 175, 1,200-square-foot houses with that amount of paint. Another way to think about it is we could paint a one-foot-wide stripe that would reach San Francisco, 75 miles away. However, not all graffiti is covered with paint. The team also uses specialized techniques to clean surfaces and remove stickers. In July of 2023, five youth were added to the team to work on Saturdays and Sundays. The youth respond to graffiti and vandalism complaints and concentrate on signs, lights, poles, utility boxes, and other time-consuming tasks that are challenging for the painters to reach with their large equipment. The youth are trained in safety for themselves and coworkers, material safety data, use of chemicals, painting, life skills, cleaning, maintenance, and use of specialized equipment. The rental housing inspection program seeks to protect tenants from a variety of hazards and preserve the rental housing stock so that it doesn't fall into substandard condition, which could force tenants out onto the streets. The rental housing inspection program proactively inspects a sample of the city's 64,000 rental units each year to ensure the units are maintained in a safe and sanitary condition. A significant proportion of the rental units inspected are single-family rental homes and duplexes. The council has adopted many business regulations over the years, including more recently adopted tobacco retailer licensing and updated massage regulations. Code staff in the Business Compliance Section are responsible for ensuring these businesses are properly licensed and comply with applicable regulations. Our new night team has expanded our capacity to work with entertainment businesses to ensure a safe and neighborly nightlife experience. Due to an increased need for after-hours responses to violations that occur at night, plus the need for nighttime business communication and outreach, and the need for a response to complaints other than law enforcement, code enforcement officers were added in 2023 to work nights and weekends. This unit is the Nighttime Code Compliance Team, or NCC. Prior to the completion, creation of this team, there was no code enforcement staffing outside of regular business hours. The NCC team responds to dozens of complaints nightly, and their requests are growing significantly. On average, they can respond to less than half of the calls that they receive each night. For many of the entertainment and nighttime venues would not otherwise have contact with city personnel due to their service hours, NCC schedules regular positive contacts with these businesses and follows up on their concerns. The NCC is in high demand to support Golden One Center, Old Sacramento, Downtown and Midtown during events, and to support our entertainment venues. Last year, the NCC team conducted over 800 business inspections for compliance, including massage businesses, entertainment venues, tobacco facilities, street vendors, taxi cabs, tow trucks, and mobile food trucks. There is currently a demand to assist with the increasingly large number of illegal street vendors, most of which come from outside the city. These vendors often make it difficult to disperse crowds leaving entertainment venues. They cause disturbances, block entrances and exits of businesses and large venues, sell alcohol without licenses, offer food from unsanitary equipment, cause littering, damage city property, and often use minors to vend into the early morning hours. The NCC team is also regularly called for complaints regarding noise, entertainment venues violating their permit conditions, buskers, and other types of vendors. So there's a lot of work to be done to try to help create a level playing field for all the businesses at nighttime and keep it safe for those crowds of people that you see in that photograph. Also note that this work will dovetail with our efforts to promote the arts and creative economy through regulatory reform and assist our nighttime businesses and entertainment-related businesses through regulatory reform. Another growing area of enforcement activity is vehicle abatement, which is seeing an increased workload as the number of abandoned and dangerous vehicles left on city streets has been increasing for several years. Many of these vehicles are RVs and trailers associated with illegal wastewater dumping into storm drains, dangerous tapping into the city's light, streetlight power supply, leaking oil and antifreeze, and unsanitary accumulations of waste, junk, and debris. CDD's costs for heavy-duty towing have nearly doubled recently, estimated to cost over $1 million for 500 RVs and trailers this fiscal year, largely due to these vehicles being used as shelter or associated with our unhoused population. This gives you a sense of the magnitude of the abandoned vehicle program. This map shows just one month of inspections in September of 2023. If I showed the map for the whole year, it would be completely covered in dots. It kind of looks like it already is completely covered in dots, but it's unreadable if I show you the whole year's map. There's a lot of activity. On another note, here is an example of proactive work by the Code Enforcement Division to avoid housing code violations by assisting low-income homeowners. Substandard and dangerous housing presents a serious threat to the health and safety of our residents. We regularly observe households facing habitability challenges due to a lack of resources to address substandard and dangerous conditions. This program helps ensure, helps provide the resources to make the needed repairs and keep people in their homes. Using $500,000 in one-time funds, largely provided by the city attorney's office through the Justice for Neighborhoods Program, Justice for Neighbors Program, the Code Enforcement Division was able to partner with Habitat for Humanity to help low-income homeowners get much-needed repairs of their critical items like water heaters or air conditioning and heating to ensure that they can stay in their homes and avoid displacement due to substandard building conditions. Up to $15,000 is available per eligible household. This program not only supports residents making necessary repairs to their homes, it also helps the city save money in the long run by helping to resolve code violations efficiently and effectively. Unfortunately, once available funds have been expended, the program will have to come to an end unless other funding can be found. Another example of how code enforcement goes beyond just responding to complaints and issuing penalties, the division has held two neighborhood cleanups in North Sacramento. The events benefit the community by providing services to homeowners who are not able to clean up their properties. With their consent, debris and trash are removed from front and rear yards, landscaping is cut back, and outdoor hazards are removed. Often, these community members cannot do this work themselves due to financial and physical constraints and disabilities. Code enforcement was able to conduct two community cleanups in North Sacramento in 2023. The cleanups had been done in prior years, but due to budget cuts, they stopped. Each cleanup had a cost of approximately $7,000, not counting overtime for staff, and used volunteers and community members to assist. Funded with one-time city ARPA funds in North Sacramento and working in conjunction with Roberts Family Community Center, Mutual Assistance Network, the Judah Product Project, the Code Compliance Outreach Team, and the International Faith-Based Coalition, Code staff created a project to ensure a clean and safe community with two Saturday neighborhood cleanups with volunteers and community members, and three outreach and resource events, including hosting a holiday outreach and trust-building event. Local youth assisted with door-to-door canvassing to notify the community of the events. Staff inspected properties for dangerous, hazardous, or non-permitted structures, pest infestations, and overgrown landscaping. Staff also helped ensure each dwelling had visible address numbers, working smoke detectors, and made sure that each rental unit is registered and maintained by the property owner. 308 parcels were inspected. 85% of them were rental properties, and 90% of the residents were very low income. 55 properties were referred to code enforcement and housing in dangerous buildings for follow-up. The goal will be to do two to three of these events each year in North Sacramento until our funding is gone. Future, future areas will be much smaller, consisting of no more than four to six blocks. Events in each area cost approximately $25,000, including the cost of events, dumpsters, building materials, smoke detectors, paint, and landscaping materials. Animal care services is an area in our department where the city really goes above and beyond the minimum services mandated by the state. Since 2012, this division has turned itself around from an organization that was known mainly for impounding and euthanizing animals to an industry leader that focuses on saving and enhancing the lives of as many pets as possible. This has largely occurred due to the dedication of the staff and managers of our Front Street Animal Shelter and a small army of volunteers committed to sustaining this legacy. In our Animal Care Services Division, key challenges include: One, currently, Animal Care Services has a 30% vacancy rate due to challenges in recruiting appropriate staff for an often physically and emotionally challenging field. Two, a nationwide shortage of veterinarians, which means it's difficult to fill these important positions at Front Street, and it's difficult to secure contract veterinarians to meet the shelter's needs while staff veterinarian positions are vacant. Three, a lack of field services staffing to respond in a timely manner to calls for animal control services. And four, a lack of physical space and appropriate facilities in our 40-year-old shelter to properly care for the thousands of animals that are brought to the shelter annually. Our animal care team includes staff who feed and care for animals in the shelter, provide medical care for shelter and foster animals, provide customer assistance with adoptions and surrenders, and respond in the field to calls for service. I'd like to highlight the significant number of volunteers and volunteer hours donated by our community to help raise the quality of care we're able to offer the pets that come to Front Street. City staff and our Friends of Front Street nonprofit have raised over $5 million for animal care over the past five years. The 95,000 hours of volunteer time equate to a value of over $3,040,000 per year. This operation is one of the few core city services that relies on donations of cash and labor to sustain it. What you see here are the most requested calls for service for field services in calendar year 2023. Due to the sheer number of calls, the field services team must prioritize emergencies, which is why they cannot respond to stray healthy dogs and barking complaints. Many of the other non-emergency calls have lengthy delays due to the priority calls. The field services team is currently approved for one chief animal control officer, two senior animal control officers, and 10 officers. Currently, they are without a chief animal control officer and have five vacant officer positions. Animal hoarding is one type of call for service that our field services staff respond to. In the case depicted in this photograph, our housing and dangerous buildings team also had to respond to this unsafe and unsanitary dwelling. Did you know that the Community Development Department operates a hospital? Well, we do have an animal hospital at the Front Street Animal Shelter. The Veterinarian Services Section is currently approved for two full-time veterinarians and five registered veterinary technicians. The Homeless Outreach Assistance Program is also approved for one full-time veterinarian and two registered veterinary technicians. Between both programs, there is only one city veterinarian currently, and four registered vet techs. In order to make up for this staffing shortage, Animal Care Services has an arrangement with our Friends of Front Street nonprofit to provide contract veterinarians. We also utilize private veterinary hospitals for after-hours and supplementary services. Our key metric in animal care is our live release rate. Our staff strive to save as many pets' lives as possible. In the bad old days of the early 2000s, most animals in the shelter didn't make it out alive and were euthanized. As you can see in the graph to the right, over the past 12 years, the percentage of animals leaving our care alive and well has dramatically increased from a low of less than 30% up to 84% today. This was made possible by our dedicated team, who are overworked, undersupplied, and operate in antiquated conditions. And yet, despite that, with substantial community support, we have made great strides to care for animals. This is what we like to see. This is just one example of a foster animal that was healed and adopted due to the efforts of Front Street, and that's a before and after. and that's a before and after, left and right. Here are a few takeaways for the Community Development Department. This concludes my presentation. As you can see, the Community Development Department has a broad range of responsibilities and services, and the work we do is essential to the quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. And I'm going to give you a little bit of a break in the talking for now. And, and, Miss, Madam City Clerk, can we see, please have any public comment for this item?
Sure, I have three speakers for this item: Leah Morris, Ryan Misano, and Lambert. Leah, did you still want to present?
Okay.
Thank you. Your speaker said you might not.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Leah Morris, and I am the Chair of the Animal Care Citizen Advisory Committee here for the City of Sacramento. And after three hours of listening to the many, many wonderful programs that this city has responsibility for, I'm also struck of the challenges you face with some of these budget discussions. I really just wanted to be present today to advocate for the Animal Care Services. As you see, the challenges with staffing the facility, the facility itself, and the program continuation of the programs that are the outreach and the adoption and the spay and neuter programs are struggling and are amazing, and the people that participate in these services are amazing and wonderful people. I am one of the volunteers that, in addition to the advisory group that has been in that clinic and participated on spay days, where we've spayed and neutered 25, $30 animals in a day. It's amazing, and it's also very challenging in that facility. So we look forward to continuing the work of the committee with you all, and also just wanted to emphasize again, hopefully, your attention to the shelter and supporting the work of the shelter. I want to just thank Member Talam, Councilmember Talamantes, who made a visit to the shelter with her staff recently and had a nice tour through and a discussion and a day there. We look forward to, we have, trying to outreach to all of you to invite you for a day at the shelter or a partial day at the shelter through the committee. That's the work of our committee. So we look forward to reaching out to you each. I also want to thank the Clerk's Office, who always is very helpful to me and every question I have about how the committee runs. So thank you for that. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris, and thank you for your service on the commission.
Our next speaker is Ryan Misano, then Lambert.
Make sure that's visible, please.
Proceed.
I'm not leaving this podium until I get my two minutes. You guys have a nasty habit of ending comments that you don't want to hear. The last meeting, by the way, for those not present, was just ended because the mayor did not like to hear the truth that he's not fond of. Please make that clear. When it's your speakers, you have no problem making it clear. I'm tired of the shenanigans of this council and your paid agents in the audience who constantly interrupt to try to quash the truth. They're not here tonight or today, it looks like. I'd advise you to be ashamed of yourselves, but if you're a politician in Democrat city, you have no shame. I want to recommend drug-testing politicians. I just brought up the tribe that was responsible for the murder of 100 million. The mayor trampled on my First Amendment rights, and the next meeting continues as if nothing has happened. I don't know how members of the City Council function without drugs. You are all living a lie, which is why you all are disturbed by the truth so much. Mayor, you need to stop the land acknowledgements at the start of the meeting right now. It's gross hypocrisy. You allow these ridiculous acknowledgements while you hypocritically support Israel's theft of Palestinian land and the genocide of the Palestinians. For the deceived people on the left, predominantly women, who think American imperialism is a problem, let me tell you, and the factual proof is on my website, every American military conflict from the 1898 Spanish-American War has been instigated by and for Jewish interests.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Keep your mouth shut. It is my turn to talk. You be quiet. You keep your mouth shut, too. You throw a temper tantrum every single time.
Ryan.
Mr. Misano, please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out.
You are now in violation of Chapter 5a1 of the City Council Risa Procedure. If you do not stop, I will order you to leave this meeting. Do you understand this warning?
What you don't understand is you work for us.
Sir, you have been given a fair warning and have elected to disrupt this meeting. I now order you to leave the meeting.